Good afternoon and welcome. Today is January 12, 2016. The time is 2:02 PM and I'll call this briefing meeting to order. We have a full agenda this afternoon, so we'll get started as soon as I ask Dr. Atkins if he has anything to say before we start.
No, we're good to go.
Okay, all right. First up is Mrs. LaFountain and Maggie Stevens. Good afternoon.
And I guess I misspoke because I did want to introduce them. I didn't have anything beyond that. Before we get into the first item, Head Start Eligibility, Recruitment, Selection and Enrollment, I do want to mention that we had our meeting recently and we had a great conversation about the need for an expansion of our pre-K programs and I want to compliment the two of them for really spearheading that effort. Also wanted you to know that Patty Lochner also mentioned it this morning in our Board Advisory Chairperson's meeting, so I think as we move forward, we're going to see really a wonderful expansion that should have happened probably a long time ago because we all know that if kids are prepared for K-12 education, for their K-12 education through pre-K and other programs, that they're so much better off. And I mean, everything from discipline to graduation rates to achievement on and on and on, so I just wanted to give that as kind of an introduction, so looking forward to great things as we move forward. So with that, Jeanne LaFountain and Maggie Stevens.
Good afternoon, Board, Dr. Atkins, staff and community members. Thank you for those kind words. This afternoon, we are bringing forward to you Board Policy 435, which is the Head Start Eligibility, Selection and Enrollment Criteria. The Head Start performance require that every year, the criteria is updated as needed based on the changes in the community which are reflected in our annual community assessment report. As you recall, the district earned an Early Head Start Child Care Partnership, which is the new grant designated for families of working poor with children birthed to age three. The changes in the policy this year are needed so that we can include these children in eligibility criteria. The only other additional changes to the board policy is language changes to better align our eligibility criteria with the language in federal guidance. That's all.
Thank you. Board members, any questions or comments? Thank you for the work you do. I have a great grandson in your program and he's doing amazing. Thank you.
We're glad. Thank you.
Okay, next, she's making her way up, Susan Millay. We'll talk to you about a change in our procurement policy and this is something that we've been seeking for quite a long time, so I really appreciate board support of this policy change.
Thank you, Dr. Atkins. Good afternoon, Board members. We're here today to review the proposed policy changes for purchasing policy 6.07 and the change that we're looking at is one that we've reviewed over the summer and again in November. And the proposal is to align our purchasing threshold with the Florida Department of Education rules to have a purchasing threshold of $50,000 and so the change to the policy is to change the current purchasing threshold from $25,000 to $50,000.
Great. Board members, comments? Mr. Toyber.
Well, I wish Ms. Dozier was here. I know she's categorically outspoken on that threshold level. I don't know where she lands at this current time.
There was a traffic issue, so she's a few minutes late.
Yeah, we may want to circle back around on this one.
Okay. Is that okay, Ms. Morgan?
Yeah, that's fine. I'm just going to add a comment that I'm thrilled that this is being brought forward and I know that the Finance Advisory Committee will also be very excited to see this take place, so thank you for your great work, as always.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And finally, for this section, I want to bring forward Dr. Pruitt, Dr. Halsted and Ms. Christine Christensen to talk to us about our very important topic, our employee retention data. They will provide you with the current information and I'm sure some ideas about how they'd like to make some changes to the KPIs moving forward. So, Dr. Pruitt.
Just one second, please. What we're going to provide for you this afternoon is just a overview of the retention data. Some of the information was shared with you in the Focus 4 overview that we did in December. Ms. Christensen and Dr. Halsted were very instrumental in helping to prepare this information for you, so I have them here in case you have any questions, but in the interest of time, I'll just briefly go through the information with you. The first slide is just, again, a review of the Focus Area 4 and the measures that we are looking at, so that's not new information, but just kind of wanted to frame that that was shared with you in December. Really, what is new information is looking at the raw retention data. What we do and the reason that you don't get this information until about this time of year is that we compare the October FTE from one year to the next. That way, we have a true picture of what employees are still with us during that time. So as you can see, looking at the trend line here, what the current data is for FY15 in terms of, you know, where we're at at 86.82, which is declining by a couple percentage points. And then next, what we look at is specifically at the raw data related to minority retention and as you can see here, there was quite a drop from 90 down to 84%, so, which is why when we've talked to you about our recruitment and retention efforts, we have some specific things targeted in that area and it's because of this data moving forward. This is a breakdown of all of the areas and the three-year trend, looking at the percentages, and it pretty much just mirrors the last two slides that we just looked at. Overall, kind of a decline in the retention and pretty significantly there in the African-American cohort group. The next slide looks at information that Dr. Atkins started following several years ago and that's looking at a cohort group of instructional folks that were hired. So, the group of teachers that were hired in 2009 and 10, there were 548 hired, how many left in year one, how many left in year two, year three, and so on. What I will say to you is while these percentages are not what we would want to have, they are reflective of the national percentages. So while they're not, again, not real good, they do reflect what's going on in the teaching profession in terms of people leaving the profession in the first five years. And you can see there with the cohort group, again, that percentage is reflective of, you know, October the year before to this October. We thought this was the appropriate time to also share with you an overview of the exit interview results that we have received in this last year. I say this as also part of a reminder that we have revamped the entire exit interview process and instituted some other things that I'll share in just a minute to try to get at some more conclusive data to really get some actionable things that we can look at in human resources to work on what this data is showing us. But as you can see there, just looking at the percentages and the various areas as to the choices and what was selected by the employees, just a reminder, though, that this is a voluntary exit interview and therefore, you know, the number of responses doesn't necessarily reflect the number of employees that left during that time, but it is the data that we have available. And then broken down a little further, when we asked for them to provide additional, you know, if they want to share any additional information as to why they're leaving, you can see there what the responses were. We tried to categorize them based on the comments that were made. So probably what is most important to this conversation is, so what are we going to do about it? And some of the things in review is very specific strategies where we look at providing tuition reimbursement in those areas to try to assist folks who may not be able to or who are struggling to afford to be able to take those tests and to provide the opportunity to help them with that and the same thing with the subject area reimbursements and then the reading endorsement incentives, providing incentives to hopefully get folks to get that endorsement. We're currently working through a process now where we're working specifically with individuals that may not have met all of their requirements yet to provide them support, provide them options, what can we do, how can we help you, so that we don't get to the end of the year and we have all these people who didn't do what they were supposed to do. So that's in an effort for retention. As I shared with you, we're revamping the onboarding process to really work at creating that bond and commitment to the district upfront so that it sort of creates that sense of belonging early on to, you know, address that issue of retention. We shared with you the wellness initiatives and all the things that we're doing there that through various surveys are definitely working at overall employee wellness, which is a retention strategy. The new hire survey, we're doing a couple of things there. We are taking feedback from folks now when they attend the onboarding meetings so we can see what we might be missing or what information and how is that experience. We're also in the process, we'll be sending out with, very shortly, a survey to all instructional staff that was hired since July 1 to get some feedback on their initial experience for the first semester. You know, where are we lacking? What do we need to do? What support do we need to provide? How can we, you know, best assist you? And then again, as I've discussed, the revamping the exit and the stay interviews to get some actionable data. Specifically, as it relates to the minority recruitment and retention, we are working to get involved with some organizations that will provide some strategies and outlets to assist us in this endeavor, specifically the National Diversity Council recruitment team specifically working with the historical Black colleges and universities and then doing some other targeted recruitment at universities where we're seeing graduates that, you know, are potential candidates for us moving forward. And also in review, when we covered Focus Area 4, we're going to continue to work on collecting metrics that will provide us information that we can continue to improve on, where we're going to recruit, how we're recruiting and, you know, what we're doing in all of those areas so that we can actually do something with that information and have some actual metrics that will tell us where should we be spending our time, spending our effort, spending our money, so that we're getting the best return on our investment. We do have, this has been available for a couple of years, if you're, ever you want to see specific information related to, you know, our data, we do have a dashboard and that gets updated as we get information in, so that's always available to you if you're needing that information for any reason. And then now I'll just take any questions that you might have.
Board members? Mrs. Morgan?
Sure. So, I think it's great that you're using data to help focus your efforts, but I do have a question. Do we, for those minorities, do we use existing graduates? Do we use existing teachers to recruit at the schools from which they graduated?
Yes.
Okay, great. And to what extent do we involve community members in the onboarding? I have heard that for minorities, this is an unattractive area to come to in terms of becoming part of a community, that if you're a minority, it's more, there are plenty of other places to go where it's easier to start a new life. So the question is, to what extent do we involve the minority population here that's interested in changing our demographics? To what extent do we involve them in the onboarding, in the support in that initial year?
We, I would say we do not. I would say that would be an untapped area. The things that we are doing in that effort is, in the HR executive group, I'm working with those folks, we're talking about creating some quarterly, for lack of a better word, you know, get-togethers for young professionals. We're specifically looking at young singles and then, you know, young single minority and then young families as well in that same vein because it isn't, that is also an issue that Hertz sees and that Chico's and Lee Memorial where they have that same struggle. So we're trying to figure out avenues and ways that we can try to, within the community, get those events going. So I'm hoping that we'll see some positive results from that effort.
Terrific. Good. Thank you. Mrs. Dozier.
We are still using a mentor program for all new hires, is that correct?
Yes.
All right, so even if someone has been teaching somewhere else, they come here and they still get a mentor, right?
Yes.
And I know that one time, what we did was, we did an outreach and I don't know if we're doing this, but the mentors were encouraged to, like, not only mentor them in the educational arena, but also not necessarily mentor them, but befriend them and take them out into the community and take them to, you know, to show them where different aspects of the community that you want to enjoy are and stuff like that. I don't know if we're still encouraging that with the mentor program, but it's certainly an avenue that we could tap into immediately because I know when you've got a good mentor that takes you somewhere with them, you know, if they're going to go somewhere, go to, you know, take them to lunch or something like that, I know that that always helps to kind of get you, get you ingrained in a community or get you in a very comfortable position in the community. And I know a lot of our principals encourage that type of, you know, behavior in their schools and stuff like that, so if we could do something like, you know, tapping into the resource that we already have, our mentors, I think that might be a way for us. And I, to tag on to what Ms. Morgan said, I do know that that issue, in fact, when I was in administration, I had a young African-American come to me and he said, he said, "Ms. Dozier, I love teaching here," but he said, he says, "There's no, there's no life outside of the school for me. I just can't find it." And so there is a feeling out there that there's an isolation and I don't know how we can, I know, you know, I think church, but there are other avenues too and I think the idea that you have of, I know the chambers have something called after-hours meet and greets. That might be something that already exists that we can tap into because they could go and meet, not necessarily all singles, but they could go and meet other professional people because, you know, there's no reason why our teachers aren't attending these after-hours meet and greets with the professional community because they are professionals. And if we're wanting to raise the level and the respect for education, we need to encourage these types of things and want a way for them to meet young professionals that have come to the area because those things are very, I think you attend some of them, they are very well attended.
Yes.
So I think that's something that we could, that already exists that we could tap into right away, too.
I agree and I know there's a new group that's formed in South Fort Myers-Benita area that is specific to that and targeting that, so I appreciate that. I think that's a great idea.
Awesome. Mr. Toyber.
Thank you, Ms. Fisher. One of the issues, you know, back when I was, ran Paul Corporation, bringing leaders down here, the problem wasn't so much with the leaders because they're in their job and they're working and they're buried, it's their spouses. Their spouses come down to this new community and they're isolated. And so, you know, Steve Scott, when he was in leadership of Lee County, we were trying to get together with other businesses to get some type of a program where the spouse and the, you know, the husband and wife, you know, whether it be the male or the female, it doesn't really matter, they're both isolated and get the couples together and get all these new people that are down in our community out and about in some type of a forum so that they can actually get introduced as a community, you know, as a couple and also the singles to do that as well. But that seems to be a big isolation was the other partners, so that might be something that you want to reach out with the business community and.
The other thing, too, that you just triggered for me to remember is that the other thing we're talking about is also utilizing the trailing spouse in terms of career choices. So for example, if they go to work for Hertz, then we would, we're trying to figure out how we can partner up so that we could say, "Oh, well, why don't you go to the Lee County School District because they have these job opportunities and that we will get in that agreement." So we're, that's another piece of what we're talking about.
Right.
Any other comments, Board members? And I don't want to be redundant because I agree with what was said here and I just have one other comment. You know, I think that, like you said, nationally, we're losing teachers and I think it's because of a lot of the. because of a lot of the external mandates and requirements that have come on us. And I've heard people say that it really is not the money, it's, it's, you know, the way they feel like they belong to the group and, and the way they're treated at work. And I noticed in one of the charts you showed us that other, other jobs and leadership were high on why people are choosing to, to move on. So, that being said, back to the minority issue, we, we have a lot of talented minorities in-house, and I know that we're making efforts with our students to kind of grow our own, but I'm wondering if we're making any kind of a special effort with those that we have presently working for us in helping them maybe even come from support personnel to teaching personnel with a little bit of mentoring. So, I don't know if that's been another area that's been tapped.
Not specifically to minority population, but we are looking at all current non-instructional staff that have bachelor's degrees that might be potential candidates for teaching. So, I appreciate that piece, because we could sort of add that to that effort as well and specifically looking at that as well.
Thank you.
Yep.
Board members, anything else? Thank you very much. We appreciate that.
I just had, I had a couple of comments I wanted to add in terms of some, some of the other things that are, are related, maybe not specifically under the HR's purview, but a lot of things that you'll find on the strategic plan are not just in one department or one division, but they're, they're really kind of cross-departmental. One of the biggest things that we have to do as an organization is, we have to stop the bleed of teachers that we see every year. 500 teachers lost last year is way too many teachers. That's almost 10% of our workforce lost in one year. And there's a number of reasons underlying that, but the biggest one is, is working conditions. Part of that is imposed upon the state, but some of that is self-imposed, you know, there are different schools. So, what we're doing is working with school development, we're working with our Talc reps, and we're working with our teacher leaders to actually improve the working conditions within the school district of Lee County. This will be the best place to work, period. You know, because we want people to, to want to come here, work here, stay here. So, in working with, with Talc leadership, I think we're well on our way to really making improvements in our working conditions and giving the people who are actually on the front lines a voice in, in what that's all about. So, instead of us dictating to them what the working conditions are, you're a professional, you're a teacher, you have a say in what your working conditions will be. So, so that's something, and I, you know, we heard that loud and clear when Dr. Pruden and I went and visited the Talc rep meeting. We heard it last year, or I heard it last year, now we both heard it this year. We're in a position to do something about it, and, and we will. The second thing she mentioned, that's the grow your own. Grow your own, I think we have a lot of untapped potential here in the community, and, and this also gets to our minority issue, because if we just look to others like Florida Gulf Coast University, Florida Southwestern, I'm not picking on them, I don't, but we have to feed them, okay? They're, they're taking the folks that come to them, we need to help assist them and feed it with our teaching academies, and also with trying to get our students that are, you know, that maybe not have the means to go to college, provide, link them up with opportunities so that they can go to college, encourage them through our teaching academies and others, so that we actually grow, grow our own. Also with our current employees, you mentioned, we, we are, we are doing that, but every, we have to be better recruiters, you know, and that's, we're educators are some of the worst recruiters in the world. I can say it, I'm an educator, lifelong educator. You go to the teacher's lounge and, and do you get encouragement to go into the profession? Nine times out of 10, you don't. Well, we have to correct that, so that nine times out of 10, you do. So, it does become encouraging to go into this particular profession. And then work every time you get out, I know board members do this, I've seen you do it, but all of us, every time we get out in the community, talk about the profession, it's a very family-oriented profession, by the way. The median income in Lee County is like $36,000. We can start you out at 40K as a beginning teacher. So, and you're working 196-day work year, and you're touching the future, and I think it's a great family-oriented profession. So, if every opportunity that we get to recruit people to this profession, all the, all the better. And a lot of these degrees don't lead to a 40K a year job. They don't. I mean, you, you, some of the degrees that, that you can get at FSW or FGCU lead to no job or a low-paying job. And so, this is a job where you're starting out at 40K and then building a career within that, so you can actually have a wonderful career with increased pay and compensation within the classroom. So, all that stuff has to be done, not just out of HR, but this, I'm telling you, this is a community effort, has to be. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Atkins. I'm just going to digress for one minute and give Mrs. Dozier an opportunity, are, do you guys have anything else?
Yeah, thank you.
Oh, okay. Thank you very much. I'm sorry.
And I-
We could go on all day about this, I know.
And I thank you for giving me the opportunity to, I was, I apologize about being late. There was a lot of traffic over by my house, there was a fender bender at Fort Myers High School, and it was blocking all the roads, and I literally was locked in, and I called and I said, "I can't move, I can't go anywhere." Anyway, the topic that you just talked about, about raising the, the ceiling for-
Procurement, yeah.
Procurement. I, I'd like to weigh in on that. I know I have been, I don't know if Susan's, is Susan-
She is back here, yes.
Yeah, I see her out there. If I put on my distance glasses, I can see her back there. Hi, Susan. I have been very outspoken about this issue, and I've been outspoken about it for a long time, because I have heard from people in the community that, you know, there's a reason why that ceiling is at 25,000, and, you know, it's our fiduciary duty to, you know, look over the budget and all this. But I also realize that there's a time of change. I did not hear all of your discussions, I did not know, I don't know whether y'all weighed in and said, "Yes, let's raise it," or what, but could I ask that real quick? Did y'all basically say, "Bring it forward and-"
Yeah, yes.
"-and raise the thing?" Is that what you said? Okay. So, for several reasons, I had the issue that I couldn't support it. But I've thought about it, and there are, there are reasons to increase it. I think that the fact that we've got a good staff, and one of the most important things that I want to say here at this table is, we've got a very good leader, a very trustworthy person, and I think that the fact that we've got somebody who we can trust, and you're doing an outstanding job, Susan, is that, that, that supporting something like that that comes from staff is evident that we are supporting our staff and we're supporting our organization. So, after much thought through the holidays, knowing that this was coming up, I am going to be able to support it. I'm going to kind of swallow hard when I support it, but, but because times are changing and we need to get with the times, I'm, you know, I'm going to support it, after all these years that I've said no, so.
Thank you, Mrs. Dozier.
Thank you.
Okay.
For going back to it.
Then, moving right along, I see Dr. Decemoore is ready. Debt service and new school funding. Hi, Jerry. Good afternoon.
How are y'all today?
Good afternoon, Dr. Atkins, members of the board. We're here today to talk with you about debt service, new school funding. As you know, we've talked quite a little bit about the new high school LLL and how that would be funded, and also talked a bit about our current debt service obligations, where you, as a board, have talked about before, wanting to be with that, potential new sources of funding, all those things. So, we kind of wanted to bring that conversation to you, because very soon, we're going to be getting to the point where we have to make some type of move in terms of funding the new high school that we have on the slate now. So, that being said, I just want to turn it over to Mr. Jerry Ford, here with us, our financial advisor from Ford and Associates, to talk with us about our current debt service and options that we have for the future.
Good afternoon. Thank you for allowing me to be here today with you, and happy new year to you. We're going to talk a little bit today about the way that you can issue debt, is you've been through, most of you have been through this before on many occasions. The district has built most of its schools since 1990, using debt in one form or another. In fact, the building that you're sitting in now was part of your COP program that was done when you bought this shopping center and turned it into this administration facility. So, if you look, just sort of briefly, there aren't many ways that Florida school districts can borrow money for capital projects. And they've narrowed over the years, because we used to have PICO funding and CONDES funding, which used to be major sources, and they've pretty well dried up. But you can issue certificates of participation, which are obligations that are annual, they're subject to annual appropriation by you, they're paid for from your capital outlay revenues, from your local capital outlay millage, as a matter of fact, and they're limited as to the amount of that millage that can go for them, and we'll talk, we'll talk about that in just a minute. You can issue sales tax bonds, they require voter approval. They can be done in one of two ways. You can enter into a sales tax with the county and with the local municipalities in which you reside, and you can, through an inter-local agreement, determine how you're going to split those monies up and determine how long that tax is going to be. Or school districts have the ability to go out on their own and ask for a half cent from voters. There is not a limit as to the length that that tax can run. We have seen these taxes run for five years, we've seen them run for 10, for 15 years, and for 25 years. There's, there's really no set formula. We have not seen a direct linkage between the length of the tax and the success rate of the referendums that, that have them in place. I think there are about 12 or 13 school districts now out of the 67 that successfully have been able to enter into a sales tax in one form or another. They require voter approval. You can issue general obligation bonds. General obligation bonds are bonds that are secured by your tax base, by your homeowners. And the obligation is that whatever rate, millage rate you have to charge in order to pay the debt service on those bonds, you agree to levy that amount, and the voters approve that when they, when they approve those bonds, when they approve that referendum. It is the lowest cost of borrowing that you can have. It is also rare, there have maybe been five times, I believe, since 1990, that a school district successfully has passed a general obligation referendum in Florida. Miami-Dade Schools has done it, Alachua has done it, St. Lucie has done it, there may be two others, I believe, that have done it, but that's it, five times since 1990. It's very, very rare that those pass in Florida. It's also interesting that of the 67 districts, since the sales tax legislation came into being, there are only about 13 or so of those that have been able to do that. It's great when you can, it's a good source of revenue. In your case, it allows folks from outside the county to help pay the cost of your schools. But there are challenges with that as well. There's also another way, people frequently ask, "Well, why don't we use construction loans and then take out the long-term financing when we get, when we're done building the project, just like you would on a home or a business would do?" And the fact of the matter is, you can do that. You can use something called a revenue anticipation note. The authorization for that is in Florida statutes, it's statute 101114, and that statute allows you to go out with notes of one year that can be extended up to four more years, for a total of five years. You have to re-up them each year, and those notes can be structured either variable rate or fixed rate, it can be structured as a drawdown loan. And you can do that, and then you could build whatever facility you wanted to build, and then you would go out and borrow the money long-term at the end of that, at the end of that period and pay it off then. Upside to that is that you're not carrying the full amount of the project during the construction period, there's no doubt about that. The downside to it is that you're taking market risk. So, if you like where interest rates are at a given point in time, and your belief is that rates may rise, or you're uncertain as to the environment, then you're basically throwing the dice. You're in a casino at that point, and you're saying, "I'm making a bet with taxpayer money that rates are going to be stable or rates are not going to rise." And you'll not, you never know that until it's over, but that is, that is the situation that you're entering into at that point. So, if you know with certainty that the rate environment allows you to meet your obligations comfortably and doesn't put you in a bind, it's hard to walk away from that and decide to roll the dice on short-term financing to enter into long-term financing two, three, four, or five years down the road. What does the board need to do when you get ready to issue debt? Well, first of all, you have to have a project list, you have to select your project, as you know. You have to determine, the staff and the professionals will bring you a resolution once you let them know that they're ready to do that, to the board to approve moving forward with the financing. That will have exhibits detailing what the terms of the financing will, will be, it will have all of the draft documents, it will set parameters such as a maximum interest rate, which was, which is allowed, a maximum size of the project, which would be allowed, and then, as you have done in the past, would allow the chairman and the superintendent to execute the actual financing documents and a purchase contract for the financing as long as they stay within those parameters. That's the delegated authority that you have there. Procedurally, new money issue is very, very similar to the refinancings that you've been, you've been doing over the last few years. You haven't done much new money in the last few years, but the refinancings are very similar. One of the concerns that we often hear, regardless of which client it is, is people maybe under the impression that you've been aggressive in acquiring debt, that you've really gone out and leveraged yourself. One of the, I think, hallmarks of this school board and of its administration over the past 15 years or so is been that you have been very judicious in your use of debt. You've used debt strategically. You haven't gone out and said, "Hey, we have money, let's spend it, we must have money, we still have a checkbook, I want this, this, and this." You've limited your use of debt for those facilities that you have to have as part of an overall plan, not simply in a shotgun approach. And for that reason, from a leverage standpoint, you're far better off than many of your peers around the state in terms of the amount of your debt that is, that requires support by your capital outlay millage. It is lower than most of your peers. The chart that you have in front of you shows the millage, out of that 1.5 mills that you're allowed to levy, shows the millage as of their last borrowing that Pasco, Miami-Dade, Orange, Broward, Palm Beach, and so on would have used out of their local capital outlay money. As you- Strictly for debt reduction rates? Simply for debt, simply to pay off debt service. As you can see, you're sort of at the bottom of that list. Is that all-inclusive? No, it's not, but as you can see, it contains most of your primary peers. It, it contains everybody that did an issue within the last 12 months or so, so we have more current information on them. Your tax base is growing again, obviously, that's bringing that leverage down, your debt is becoming shorter, and that is a good thing. And that is, once again, a result of the prudence that y'all have used in the way that you've used issued debt, and your aggressiveness in finding opportunities to refinance and lowering the cost of your existing debt. So, you're to be congratulated for that, but I wanted to make sure that the public understands that from a leverage standpoint, you're in very, very good position vis-à-vis your peers. Peers notwithstanding, you're in very good position at any rate.
Okay. If I can offer something just on that, as you look at the numbers that Jerry has laid out, you see that it has the currently and then what could be a post-high school in terms of what our debt service would look at, look like at that point. So, I just wanted to point out that those numbers there are based on a $57 million project cost. So, if anything inside of that were to change, and, so that $57 million project cost assumes that we have, we have the land to build the high school on, so if something were to change with that scenario, or if the cost of the building would change, then of course, those numbers will change as well. So, the assumption here is a $57 million project cost.
And a couple of words about those numbers, they're fairly aggressive on, by aggressive, I mean, they overstate the cost. If we were to enter the market today, the cost of the project would be less than those millage rates are based on, interest rates are actually lower than we've used. In fact, interest rates are surprisingly low right now. As you know, the Fed, at the end of last year, finally raised rates, a long-awaited rate move, and people wondered what that would do to the bond markets. Well, the fact of the matter is, is that, that particular rate move had been built into the market rates for a good, long time. And then uncertainty hit pretty much worldwide. Europe is having some major problems, as you know. Our economic data continues to be like riding a roller coaster at Six Flags. You have good job numbers that come out, but when you scratch behind those numbers, you see that most of those jobs are part-time jobs, they're not full employment. When you see the employment numbers and you scratch behind those, you see that a lot of people have left the workforce and are no longer seeking jobs. So, it- So it's hard to really get a feel for where that economy is. And with all of the uncertainty that's gone on over the last couple of weeks, have you seen the stock market tank? What's happened is that there has been a flight to quality, and people have rushed to bonds, to treasury bonds in particular, and that has had a significant impact on the muni market. Last week, last Wednesday, we put about $60 million into the market for Escambia County Schools in a sales tax transaction that went out 15 years. Their all-in cost of borrowing on that transaction was just inside a 205. Yeah, so it's, it was staggeringly low. We do not expect that to last a long time. We don't know. We're not prognosticators. We don't have a crystal ball. But we don't, do know where rates are today, and they're extraordinarily low. This is just a picture of your outstanding debt. You've seen this before, both in public meetings and one-on-one. And it shows that the final maturity of your debt is in 2028. That's only 12 years. That is the longest your debt goes out. Normally, when you've issued new money, you've done so for a 25-year period. If we were to do a new high school today, it probably would not be for that long a period. We would shorten it up using an average life as a guidance and just using the market rates that are out there to determine how long we go out on that. We want to make sure of two things. One, it's efficient for you. It doesn't go out longer than it needs to go. But it goes out long enough that it is sensible in line with the life of the facility and that it does not create a challenge for you 10 or 12 years from now by having a huge debt payment out there and basically keeping you from having flexibility at that time if you needed to do other things. We do not want to be rude about it, a pig and a python. We don't want to create a blockage there. Ms. Dozier, did you have a question?
I do. Looking at this chart, in 2023, it shows a little dip. Can you share with us what that's all about?
Yes, ma'am, I can.
And it goes back up gradually?
It, it does. It had to do with some debt that has been refunded already, and it had a certain maturity in there that came out. It was a certain efficiency in that maturity that brought that down a little bit. It was an impact over about three different refundings that allowed that to come down. And I believe, if you look at it, the...
2012B, I think.
That's, yeah, that is it. It's just, it's not a huge dip. It's about a million and a half dollars in there.
Right.
But as you go out over time and as you layer multiple issues, as you can see right now, there are two, four, six, eight, nine different issues out there. As you do that, and you wrap them around each other, it's not like each issue goes out and is structured like a mortgage loan. Each one of them sits on top of each other. No, these are shaped around the existing issues to achieve overall level payments. And sometimes, there's a little blip in there from time to time. It's a good question. If you layered in the new high school, and it went out 15 years, and it may go out 15, it may go out 2022, but we wanted it to be conservative and show the highest cost of borrowing here. So we went out 15 years for this. It would go out to 2030, and it would raise your maximum debt service up to, in the neighborhood of $44 million a year, which is, as you can see from the last chart, about 3.5 million above what your maximum debt service is today. So it's an efficient structure. It's an efficient time in the market, if we're able to capture the market before it goes up. We've talked about the way that it can be borrowed, the ways in which it can be borrowed. And, you know, there's really not much more to say about that. The real question is, do you go out and utilize your capacity under your capital outlay millage with COPs? Do you use construction funding through a revenue anticipation note, which would basically use the same source of funding and bank on having another source of funding available? If that source of funding did not materialize, you could pay that revenue note off with COPs at that point in time. With either of those scenarios, you are basically placing a bet that rates will not go up between now and that time, whether it's nine months from now or two years from now. Bear in mind that this school is only the first in many projects that you have in your capital outlay plan. And I don't think anybody here is suggesting that COPs will cover everything you have going forward.
Exactly. Board members, questions? Mrs. Morgan?
Thank you for that very last comment. Because this is the end of the building, right? There is no more building after this under our current revenue. Well, I mean, assuming there's no new revenue, this is it.
Yes.
We're not looking at, I mean, what we really should be looking at, and this really doesn't pertain to you, Mr. Ford, and thank you very much, but we need to layer three more or four more schools on top of your graphs to really look at where we are going in the next 10 to 15 years and then have a serious conversation about where we're going to get the money or whether we're going to change our practices with respect to building in response to student growth. So, I mean, this looks great, but this is very short-term. And this is, our, this board needs to be looking intermediate and long-term at the impact of, of enrollment growth. So I appreciated your last statement. Thank you.
And thank you for that, Mrs. Morgan. Mr. Toyber?
Yes, Ms. Fisher. Respectively, if you take a look at our, our capital COP millage requirements, you know, that school moves us from 62 to 66. We're still, you know, 13 mil, point, you know, .13 mil under Collier. And I don't know what Charlotte is, but I think Charlotte's got, I think Charlotte had a tax still there. They still have a sales tax.
Charlotte would be extraordinarily low because they only have one, one COP issue outstanding.
Yeah, because their, their growth rate. So, I mean, so we have the room to continue to do what we're doing. I agree with Ms., Ms. Morgan. I don't think that's the right thing to do. But I don't think it's, I mean, it's, I think our solution, our long-term solution is, and I think this board is pretty much in unison as far as supportive of it, is we need to demonstrate to the community that we need to retire this debt and a sales, through a sales tax and a, and a, and a fund, and a fund source that we can recognize and that's ascertainable and that's identifiable and that's repeatable. But that said, I don't want to go out and cry wolf because that's not, that's not true. We can continue to do this. It's just not smart to continue to pay for Peter, to pay Paul, and extend our, you know, to continue to put us into a, in a further debt service. You know, Ms., Mr. Fox, and I'm, I'm very, you know, disappointed that he's not here to hear this presentation, but, you know, he, he makes his point very eloquently is, you know, the, the amount of money we're spending every year in debt service could be going into our classrooms. And, and granted, you know, it's not in the operational side, but it's in our, in our capital side, which with our, our new laptops and our requirements for, for, for technology, it is greatly needed. So I, I think I agree with Ms. Morgan, but I want to be very careful. You know, we want to go out as a very pragmatic board saying, look, we need the money. We can show you why. And it's, and it just becomes a decision for the taxpayers. Do you want to, do you want to continue to pay for, for debt service? And if they talk about anybody, you know, the commercials about, you know, take investment in yourself, the best way to get yourself to financial freedom is to retire the debt, you know? And we can't do that on our own. We need the taxpayers' help to do that. And we sure as heck would like to use 60% of the tax base, being people from, that are living in Lee County that just come down and visit and clog up our roads and eat our fine food. So with that, I'll stop. Thank you, Chris.
Thank you. Mrs. Morgan?
I'm sorry, I forgot to ask another question. When did we go from 50 to 57 million for the high school?
I'm sorry, could you ask that again?
When did we go from 50 to 57 million for the high school?
Well, we don't have, I mean, we don't have a solid project cost yet. You all will be approving that once we have it. We used $57 million here for our assumption just because we wanted to make sure that we estimated on the, on the larger side of what we, you know, of what we might, what it could be. And so, but again, that doesn't include any cost for any land or anything like that. So we haven't, we really haven't settled on anything because until we are settled on a design of the building, the programs that will be in it, and how that affects the building itself and the land, that project cost is indefinite.
I guess my concern is that the assumption always was 50 million. And then, and now it's 57.
Okay, well, yes, but, you know, like I said, we are trying to, we did try to go on the upper side of that, but realize also that this high school, we've been talking about for the past three years over, I think it's been over three years that we've talked about it. So as we do that, remember, prices for labor rise, prices for materials rise. And so we're just trying to make sure that our financial planning is within the realm of what that, what the cost of that particular building could be.
And that's really the answer I was looking for. I mean, it's, it's a function of, we're now competing for materials with everybody else with this boom. So that's going to inflate our costs, but, okay.
One thing I would like to mention, you mentioned the ability to pay off debt. There is one piece of debt in your portfolio that some of you will remember. I think, Ms. Dozier, you probably more than anybody else because you've been on the board the longest. That is done as a direct purchase by a bank at this point in time. And that direct purchase renews every three to four years, and that will be coming up again next year. We've always kept that piece of debt very short and intentionally not gone out and put it out to its final maturity at a single interest rate. And we've done that because it is the most flexible piece of debt you have. And that is the piece of debt that if you had money to pay down debt with, and I believe we're out there, it's 40 million, Amy, it's 40 to 50 million, that you literally could get to, to pay down. So we've been keeping that short for you, to give you that opportunity should, should the need arise and should the ability arise. You would have the ability to do exactly what I think you're saying that your constituents want you to do, and that is take a big piece of debt out of your portfolio. And so that means that this debt portfolio is balanced. It only goes out, you know, the 14 issues, the 12 issues, they're not callable for 10 years, so 2022, 2014, you can't touch those. You can't pay those off early. But that one piece of debt we have out there, we have flexibility with, and we're going to maintain that flexibility for you so you can get to it if you want to.
Great, thank you. Any other comments? Thank you very much.
Okay, and as, as we're transitioning, I just want to, do want to make you aware, we did ask Dr. Desmore to reach out to Mr. Fox, so he was aware of this presentation. And, and, you know, prior to us actually going on and doing, presenting. Having said that, just moving to the next part of the agenda, if we're ready, we're going to go to teaching and learning, but we'll start out with the school improvement plans. Part of the thing, part of what we were asked to do is, of course, continue to demonstrate the alignment between the school improvement plans and our district strategic plan. So again, we have four buildings that are going to come present to us today. The first one, under leadership of Leslie Gunderson, Pine Woods Elementary School. So Leslie, we'll go ahead and turn it over to you and your team.
Great, thank you. Good afternoon, Dr. Atkins. Good afternoon, board members. Happy New Year. Joining us this afternoon from Pine Woods, we have Dave Crawford. He is our STEM teacher. He teaches STEM to our boys and girls kindergarten through fifth grade. He is also the proud parent of two of our students. And Chris Patrica, Chris is the parent of two...
There we go. Chris is the parent of two of our students. Do you need me to start again?
No, I think you're fine, Mrs. Gunderson. I was just trying to get Jason, Mr. Searl.
Chris is the parent of two of our students. She's actually a former employee of Pine Woods. She worked in our cafeteria for a while, and she is now an adjunct professor at FGCU. She is our SAC chair and our DAC chair. So without further ado, Mr. Crawford.
Good afternoon, board members, Dr. Atkins. Thank you for having us here. We're going to start with our main goals for our school improvement plan. And we have put them into three different silos. Although I will tell you that we've done our best to separate them into the three separate silos, they do somewhat overlap, and so there will, you'll see some overlap as we go through our presentation. Our first goal deals with tracking standards. And in terms of standards and teaching, we all start with data to drive our instruction at Pine Woods. From the data, we have our weekly professional learning communities. We, we meet on a weekly basis, each grade level, and plan out what's called our WINTIME, which is what I need. That deals with both interventions and enrichment for students in terms of how they have performed on the standards. And then we continue to monitor and see how the students have progressed through our progress monitoring. In terms of our data, teachers track the student data on a weekly basis and then compile all that data into a, essentially a class worksheet, so they have a snapshot of their entire class at one time. They, they then, on a quarterly basis, they meet with the administrative team for a quarterly data chat. And then when they go there, they bring all their data, including any issues and concerns they have with students. And what you see here is an example of one of the worksheets that they complete that gives them a snapshot of how well the students in their class are performing at any one time. Once the quarterly data chats are complete, the administrative team meets together to discuss all of the students that have any issues and concerns and then allocate resources in terms of the best needs for the students. For our PLCs, our professional learning communities, the main goal of our professional learning communities every week is to group our students and then plan the what-I-need time for the following week. So each grade level will meet together and then plan the instruction for the following week, or not plan the instruction, but plan the students that are going to have the instruction for the following week. What you see here is an example of the WINTIME calendar for an instructional year. And you'll see that on the right-hand side, you have the different English, I mean, yeah, English literacy standards. And then in the calendar, you'll see those slotted for different weeks of the year, instructional weeks of the year. Some standards are more heavily focused on than others, depending on the level of rigor and depending on how well the students have performed with regards to that particular standard on that grade level. I will tell you that this is updated, or at least the weekly groups are updated on a weekly basis, based upon how well the students have performed on the previous checkpoint, the STAR checkpoint, as well as teacher data to see whether or not they are needing some possible enrichment or perhaps some interventions when they need support or scaffolding for that, for that standard. The last piece deals with progress monitoring. And for this one, it's ongoing throughout the entire year. Teachers are tracking student achievement on their formative assessments, their checks and their, and their checkpoints, as well as teacher judgment. And we use a variety of quality tools with which to help us track it and with which we hold our students accountable, and they can track their own progress. What you see here is a graph from the previous school year, and it tracks the performance of a grade level in terms of teacher checks versus the district average. In our school, we put together a system for predictive measures of how well the students perform on the FSA in terms of gains and whether or not they would keep the level that they had achieved the year before. And we had about a 92% success rate with students who either performed where we predicted or even better.
And our second goal is teacher and student engagement. In terms of teacher engagement, we have some really great programs. First, we put together an engagement committee. And on that engagement committee sits a member of each grade level. They meet monthly, and they've come up with some really great programs. One of them was a tacky sweater contest, which you can see on the overhead. And we did not steal this from Angela Pruitt, but we do have off-campus socials as well. Another really great program is the staff recognizing staff, where a staff member will actually nominate one of their colleagues for something outstanding that they've done. And then on a monthly basis, there's a drawing, and the winner gets a gift card. But even if you didn't win the gift card, everybody who received a nomination gets a copy of it so that they can be made aware of the fact that they were nominated for something outstanding by a colleague. And then in terms of student engagement, we have some really, really great programs. One of them is theme days. We have things like Wacky Hair Day and Tacky Tourist Day, so kids can go in and have their hair look all crazy or dress up like a typical tacky Florida tourist. We also have schools' cool celebrations. Children are allowed to engage in quarterly celebrations if they meet certain behavioral goals. We have AR recognition. Kids work really, really hard to make their AR goals when they get certain prizes. The Million Word Club is a great motivator for our kids. And there are prizes for things like making 200 points. The kids get a special T-shirt. like making 200 points, the kids get a special T-shirt. They really are motivators for our kids, so they're really great. And one of the things that I hear from students all the time that they really love is when the principal signs the report card. It makes them feel special to know that Principal Gunderson is engaged in their learning, is paying attention, and knows what they're accomplishing in the classroom.
Our third goal deals with academic improvement, and we chose to increase our English Language Arts proficiency rating from 71 to 74%. What drives that is our professional development plan, and within the plan, we have thinking maps, Kagan, backwards design, and quality tools, where we look at it being a continuous improvement organization. We use PDSSAs both in the classroom for the students and we as a faculty to examine our existing practices and see how we can improve it. And then, one of the, one of the shining stars of our school is our inclusion program. We've adopted the co-teaching inclusion model at every grade level, where we are seeing students who previously may not have experienced much academic success or experiencing that success in the classroom, and you're seeing it both in their behavior and in their academic proficiency and progress in the classroom. Thank you.
That was quick and to the point. Do you have any questions for us?
Board members, Mr. Toyber.
Just a comment, I, I just want to thank, thank you for presenting, all three of you. And the initiatives that you're, that you're doing that are focusing on the people at all levels, at your teachers and your students, to make them want to do well on their own, to, to want to achieve, that permeates through your community. I get so many people saying, oh, we just love that, you know, and, and that focus creates the culture of welcoming. They really feel, people feel welcomed at your school, and that's something that is, you know, it's hard to emulate, but you know, the rest of our schools should really take notice, because when it's, when people say, we really feel welcomed there, we, you're halfway home. So I really want to thank you guys for all the efforts and the great presentation.
Thank you. We spend a lot of time there, so we want to have fun while we're there.
Any other comments, board members? Mrs. Morgan?
Yeah, I second what Mr. Toyber said. You guys do have a great reputation, and I do appreciate you, in a way, taking the lead in the district with respect to standing up for the inclusion model. I think that's really been important, so I appreciate your, your work there, Mrs. Gunderson. I do want to ask a question. When you're plotting the district average versus your school average on the various standards, do you ever isolate the, like, the top 10 elementary schools and look where they are versus where you are instead of the district, and try to identify places that maybe are doing something that, you know, would help you?
Absolutely. We do that all the time. The information that we shared on the slide is something that we share at our SAC meetings, so we can kind of just get a district average. We do that in our PLCs, we do that in our planning meetings, and we look at schools that are similar to us in their demographics as well.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, and I just want to piggyback on that and say that as you were explaining Goal Two, I was thinking of our earlier presentation about teacher retention. So the things that you're doing really are a model for what you need to be doing to keep teachers happy and have them want to stay. So thank you for that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you all. The next school that we're going to transition to, staying with the Pine theme, we're going to go to Pine Island, which Pine Island is near and dear to my heart, because this is actually where I started my professional teaching career, when there used to be a middle school out there, the late, great Pine Island Middle School. Back in the day, though, I have to tell you, when it came to working conditions, there was no other school that had working conditions that compared to Pine Island. I mean, Pine Island was just absolutely incredible, and we looked for any excuse to have a potluck that we possibly could. So having said that, I'd like to go ahead and turn it over to Rob Mizoli and his team to take us through Pine Island's school improvement plan. Thanks.
Welcome, and I want to say I worked there too, and he's absolutely right. Thank you.
It is a beautiful community out there. Thank you, Dr. Atkins. Good afternoon, board members, and thank you for this opportunity for allowing us to share our school improvement plan and a little bit of Pine Island Elementary. It is my pleasure to introduce to you Shannon Shaw, who is our technology specialist, and may I add, a future administrator in Lee County. Shannon?
Thank you. Thank you, board members and Dr. Atkins, for having us out here again today. We're looking forward to sharing a little bit of information with you about our school. Before I got started on some data and our school improvement plan, I wanted to share with you the culture of our school. First, I wanted to let you know our motto is soaring to success, and that's one of the things that we try to do every day. We are very proud of the fact that we are going on 17 years, as long as everything goes as planned, of being an A school in a row, so 17 years consistently. We at the school are, because we're a barrier island school and we have a small population, the school is really the hub of the whole community out there. Our community is very fishing oriented, we have a lot of artists, musicians, and so we try to do a lot to support the community and those students and adults that are on the island. A lot of the students that go to school there have parents and grandparents that have also passed through, so we try to keep a lot of the traditions the same while maintaining the innovativeness that we need to continue with, while bringing in technology and things that are driving the future for our students. Because we do that, and we have such a great relationship with the community, we have a lot of support through all of those members. Of course, they include the community. We have some organizations that support us. Just last night, Mr. Mizoli went to a dinner with an organization you may have heard of called the Matley Shea Hookers, and they presented our school with a huge check that's going to be able to afford our school to do many things. We have a lot of great parent involvement. Our students that are there love to come to school. I was at an OM spontaneous workshop this past weekend and got a lot of high compliments about the respect that they show and the kindness, and of course, our staff. We have a very small turnover rate, they come to school and really enjoy being there. So when we look at our vision statement, this was one that we created last year, and we want to really encourage the whole student. We look to make sure that they're well-rounded, creative thinkers who have a love for learning and who are successful, positive community members. We recognize that not all students are going to be college-bound, but that we really need to teach them that they need to be hard workers, who are going to be participating back and giving back to the community, whether it's through their professions, or they may be fishermen like their parents. So really teaching them some values and great character traits while educating them academically. These are our Eagle values that we formed at the end of last year. We formed a committee to engage our teachers, and we came up with these three Eagle values: be responsible, be respectful, and be safe. Every day on the school news, our students say this, it's the Eagle pledge, and we try to instill this in all of our students. It's a great way for all of our teachers, students, staff to be on the same page, that if a student is not doing something that's expective of them, we can come back to one of these three values and ask them, which one of these values are you not participating with fully, and how can we do better? How can we meet one of these values? And so they know these in and out and are able to recite them very easily. This is a chart that shows you how we have done over the last eight years. Of course, we don't have this year's data, but in, over the last seven years, we have been in the top 10 of all the elementary schools in Lee County, and six of those seven years, we've been in the top five. So we're very proud of that, but of course, we're always looking to see where we can improve, and that's part of what our school improvement plan is always driving us to do. The academic goal that we chose to write this year is centered around our science. We know that all students K through 5 are instructed in science, and so we thought, even though because the fifth graders are the only ones that are being assessed on it, we still wanted to put this in there because we were fortunate enough for all students to get some additional supports, and we included that into our school improvement plan. The goal is that the students who meet proficiency from third to fifth grade will increase from 68 to 71%, and we use tools throughout the year to monitor their progress. We have the district-created Castle Standards Tracker that we're looking at frequently, the Performance Matters data, formative assessments that are given in the classroom, and then teacher-based and student observations that occur in the classroom and in our STEM lab. So all of our students K through 5 go to a STEM class twice a month. This is some data that we've taken so far this year. At the beginning of the year, you can see in the bar on the bottom, was the first assessment that our fifth-grade teachers took. This was just a preliminary assessment that told us how they did on the science fundamentals, some of the beginning concepts that they had learned from kindergarten through fourth grade, and you can see that they were 53% proficient in that. We were hoping to have done better, and so our fifth-grade teachers looked at that, looked at the standards to see where they could improve, and you can see that through the last three assessments, they have been continuously improving, and we're hoping that that will continue. This is an example of the Standards Tracker. So not only do we look at the overall assessments that we're giving, but we also try and break it down by standard. And each standard is labeled down there at the bottom. We can tell the standards that the students are proficient in, and then also the standards that they need some work on. So if you look at the standard almost to the right, SC3N16, that standard is inferencing through observations. That would be a standard that we need students to work on, and we can do that through all different kinds of content, because they make inferences across all different subject levels. So that's something that we, our teachers would be focusing on. So what does STEM look like at Pi? Every day for an hour, our students focus on science, and they do that through hands-on activities. We do lots of science experiments, two to three times a week. Our fifth graders are going on four off-campus field trips. We're fortunate enough to have a family that has donated a substantial amount of money to our school and is paying for all fifth graders to go overnight to NASA. We also have field trips that come to our school, such as the STAR lab. And then even for our primary students, they are in the STEM lab, they're being instructed in the classroom, and we have a correlation between the classroom teacher and the STEM teacher, so that the STEM is always supporting what's going on in the classroom. We also have a block of time that we call Eagle Time, since we're the Eagles, and it stands for enriching all great learners every day. So this is an opportunity for us to provide intervention for those students who aren't mastering standards, and enriching those who are, and giving them the extra that they could be using to go further than what the typical curriculum may be giving them. In kindergarten through second grade, it occurs during their two-and-a-half-hour reading block, where there's always a support person in there to help the teacher. In third through fifth grade, it occurs at a separate block of time, which is 40 minutes. The instruction that's being provided is always deliberate and standards-based. We regroup those kids based on the standards that they're mastering, and that occurs about every two to three weeks. We're giving them formative assessments, and that information is being entered in the Castle, and also that's being driven through Performance Matters. And then we look at that information through our PLC meetings that are being held every Thursday for about 45 minutes. And during those meetings, we're collaborating and looking at best practices, who is perform, what groups of kids, what groups of teachers are doing well on that, what are they doing, and how can we share what's being done well. This is an example of what that schedule looks like. So you can see in kindergarten, the time is occurring in the morning and in, for, I'm sorry, kindergarten through second grade, it's occurring in the morning, and third through fifth grade, it's occurring in the afternoon. This is an example of what the Castle Standards Tracker looks like, if you haven't had the opportunity to see it, and just a formative assessment that a teacher may enter. So you can enter in the points correct that the teacher, that the student may have gotten, what the standard is, and then that'll all be tracked throughout the year. And then, of course, we always want our teachers and our students to be engaged, so we do hold our PLCs throughout the year, every week. We also are providing opportunities for our teachers to collaborate, and we just had our leadership meeting this morning to give them their opportunities for the dates that they're going to be doing that. We're providing subs for them to have additional time to plan. Myself and our curriculum specialists go in and cover their classrooms, so they can go in and watch model lessons from other teachers. And our goal, obviously, is to involve all instructional staff who provide this opportunity for student groups. So we involve our paras, myself, anyone who touches these students is, is attending these meetings. And this is a model of what our goals are for the continuous improvement of student learning. We're always looking at what our goals are, what are our objectives, how are we going to approach these needs? We share our results with one another, we make our changes, and it's a cyclical event that occurs every two to three weeks so that we can touch our students. Again, we want to thank you for allowing us to be here. We welcome you to come out to our school anytime. It's a great campus, and we would love to see you there sometime. Are there any questions or comments?
Yes, when is Mr. Mizoli going to be cooking? Because that's when I want to come.
Well, he just made me a stromboli about two weeks ago.
I usually do strombolis around Teacher Appreciation Week, Staff Appreciation Week. That's usually the first week in May, so come on out then. And then we have our AR barbecues, and that will be in a couple weeks.
And I really do like the, the model for the goals, continuous improvement of student learning, which really encompasses everything that you need to do, including the make-changes part. So thank you very much for sharing this. Board members, any other comments? Or Mrs. Morgan?
I just, you know, we've had three elementary schools present. You're all using data, and you're all responding to it in very different ways that are specific to your school cultures, that your student needs, whatever, and I think that's terrific, because it says, you know, what, what, what makes us a really interesting district is that everybody's doing different things, and we can all learn something from one another. So I'm finding these presentations just terrific. So thank you all, really. This has been great.
Thank you. Any other comments? Thank you very much. We really appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Okay, thank you. So next time you have a potluck, invitations would be appreciated.
We'll do.
Okay. Our next team making their way to the stage would be our outstanding team from Calusa Elementary, under the leadership of Principal Shelley McGaroff. So who wants to start the introduction? But, okay, Shelley, I'll take it away.
All right. Good afternoon, board members and Dr. Atkins. I'd like to introduce the staff and team that I brought with me from Calusa. Mrs. Gay Page, our intervention specialist. Mrs. Laura Jordan, our fourth-grade teacher. Mrs. Diana Lowry, our assistant principal. Mrs. Robin Heller, our fifth-grade inclusion teacher. Sebastian Rodriguez, a fifth-grade student in Mrs. Heller's class. And Sebastian's mom, Denise Quinones. And they're all here to tell you about the great things that we're doing at Calusa.
Welcome.
So we'll start with Mrs. Page.
Our first goal is to increase reading gains from 70% to 73% by the end of the year. How will we accomplish this goal? We start by using data analysis to diagnose and treat deficiencies. STAR reports are run quarterly and progress tracked. Reading intervention groups are initially formed with this data. In addition to intervention groups, compass learning paths are created for individual students based on the STAR test. Progress of our lowest 25% of students are tracked in our data room quarterly. This is based on STAR growth. Grade level and school-level goals are calculated and measured to determine whether our intensive intervention program is working. Every day, our school has WINTIME, what I need time. Students are grouped by the standard that they, as of right then, they have not mastered. When they master this standard, they are moved to the next group. WINT groups work on a standard that they have not mastered. Here, the group is taking a look at where they are on the scale of mastery. A 3.0 is a mastery of the standard. Resource teachers are used for targeted student intervention, and intensive intervention through daily push-in or pull-out services. In addition, we have supplemental instruction that goes beyond the school day. We are not Title I or a school that has teacher leaders, so we must be creative with our resource teachers. Progress monitoring is done many ways at our school. We use Castle, Performance Matters, the reading dashboard from Reading Renaissance, STAR, formative checks, district checks, and MTSS. Data is important, but unless we dig deep down and look at the mastery of the standards, we can't prescribe an accurate plan of action, so we track standards. Mrs. Laura Jordan will tell you about our second SIP goal.
Our goal states that 100% of our teachers will track and progress monitor through the use of Castle this school year. This aligns for District Goal One, to increase student achievement. In order to track standards correctly, we had to do some professional development. During the summer, we had a team of teachers from each grade level come to do some professional development and work with the standards. We followed up with training on priority standards, proficiency scales, format assessments, and differentiation. In addition, every teacher will have the opportunity to spend a day-long doing instructional rounds in the school, which I, that's my personal favorite. Our professional development over the summer involved having teams identify priority standards for reading and math. Teams then created 4.0 scales to go with each standard. The purpose of the scale is to define a clarity of what needs to be accomplished to achieve mastery of the standard. A score of 3.0 means that the student can do everything that the standard requires him or her to do. A score of 2.0 means that the student has partial mastery of the standard, and this clearly identifies what the students need to do to reach a standard, and they know where they are, and they're able to articulate that. Many of our teachers have found clever ways to track mastery of the standards in the classrooms. Students understand what level they're at and what they must do to become proficient. Priority standards are tracked for, as a Priority standards are tracked for, as a school, for the lowest 25%, posted in our data room. But of course, teachers are consistently tracking all of the students in their classrooms. In addition to PLCs, each teacher is assigned a data team. We have a total of eight teams, such as literacy, math, science, writing, STAR, enrichment, at-risk, and pre-K. Each team measures the progress of the school and each individual grade. Improvement plans are written and, of course, celebrations are held. I'm going to let Diana Lowry, our assistant principal, tell you about the professional development that we're doing at Calusa to improve our instruction.
Good afternoon. Our Title II grant money was used to allow every teacher to take part in a full day of instructional rounds. A group of three teachers meets each morning, and then they discuss what highly effective teaching strategies would look like in the classroom and what engagement would look like for the students as well. They also discuss what good differentiation would look like in the classroom. The teachers are then given a schedule to follow for that day and then go out and record the strategies that they are seeing in the classrooms. Throughout the day, they highlight those practices that they saw and take notes on student-teacher behaviors that they see. At the end of the day, the group debriefs what they observed. While I'm here, let me introduce our school improvement plan goal for number three. This goal is tied to teacher engagement. At the end of last year's, our teachers took the Gallup Employee Engagement Survey. The question that our teachers ranked the lowest was, "At work, my opinion seems to count." Our goal this year is to engage teachers in a way where they feel that their opinion counts and is valid. Strategies that have been implemented to improve teacher engagement are weekly PLCs with administration, bi-monthly leadership team meetings, staff surveys, an anonymous issue bin for administrators, drops in the bucket, birthday recognition, staff member recognition, staff coupons, new teacher orientation, and mentoring. Besides engaging our staff, we strive to engage our parents and community. We invite parents in quite regularly throughout the year for things such as open house, first and third quarter parent conference nights, parent education nights, SAC and PTO meetings, talent shows, movie nights, always popular. We've logged about 10,000 hours of volunteer work each year, and we're very proud of that. One of our favorite parent involvement activities is called One School, One Book. Each child is given the book, The World According to Humphrey. We sent home a calendar of scheduled readings for the families. The teachers also read aloud that book in class so that everyone is on the same page. During this read aloud, Humphrey arrived at our school, and Humphrey likes to leave us book recommendations and notes to the students. He makes guest appearances on the morning news as well. The kids love Humphrey, thus they love One School, One Book. We love our community of business partners as well. For the last 20 years, the Gulf Coast Rotary Club has participated in Reading is Fundamental Distribution three times every year for all K-2 students, giving them a free book to take home. By the time they leave second grade, our students leave with nine books in their hand. The children love Riff Day because they get to choose their favorite book, and there's quite a variety. First Assembly West also is a big sponsor of ours. At the start of each year, they donate about 100 backpacks filled with school supplies. During the year, they also host a Good News Club for about 60 of our students each week. At the end of the year, they sponsor a huge staff appreciation as well. Of all the things that we do here at Calusa, inclusion is by far what we are most proud of. I'm going to let Mrs. Heller, one of our inclusion teachers, speak to you about inclusion.
Good afternoon. Two years ago, we had nine self-contained classrooms that were made up of students that were in classes for autism and intensive academics. In our first year of implementation, we were able to put approximately 70 students in inclusive classrooms with great success. This year, we were able to add an additional 30 students to our inclusion classrooms and continue to have the great successes. They surpassed all of our expectations. You can walk into any of our inclusion classrooms and you would not be able to tell which students had an IEP. They truly all work together, they get what they need regardless of whether they have the IEP or not. I wish truly that each and every one of you could, like, witness that moment when they realize they're successful. I'm the crier in the group. So it truly is. And also, in our IEP meetings, when parents are crying because their child is successful in making those huge learning gains. So with that, I brought Sebastian Rodriguez and his mom, Denise Quinones, and he's going to share his story about being in inclusion. Thank you.
Okay. Hello, my name is Sebastian Rodriguez and I have high functional autism. I am speech impaired. I was in a self-contained classroom known as an ESE classroom. My mom tried her best to take me out of this classroom. The classroom was not helpful. Sometime in January of 2015, my mom talked to the principal, Ms. McGrath. She took my mom to some classrooms that were not inclusion. She, and had all self-contained ESE kids. Then she took her to all fourth-grade level inclusion class. That has changed my life. The teachers helped me with everything in the other classroom. I felt mistreated and left out. I didn't have a saying. My grades were bad and I did not like what they were teaching me. I could not walk around the school and I was not in a general education school environment. Now, in the inclusion classroom, I can talk more, it's more challenging. Teachers teach me real stuff. That's interesting. I can talk and express my feelings. I can talk to kids and I can talk back. There's no one yelling. What's more important is my grades that are improving, and I feel like I'm a real person. And I feel like I'm accepted and included in the general education school environment.
Wow. Wonderful. Good job, Sebastian.
I just want to say that he's been through Patriot Elementary, then Hector Cafarrada, then I homeschooled him for two years because the different programs in the ESE were not catering to his needs. And then I went to Calusa, and at first, we had to stick with what the IEP and what they had told us before. But I am very happy that the principal at this school listened, truly listened to me, and that they had this program in that school to include him because he's like in the borderline, you know? And I'm just very grateful that that program has helped him become a better child because he was already great, but he became better.
Thank you.
Before you leave, can you introduce your daughter first?
She was. Say hi. Hello.
Her name?
What's her name? What's her name? Her name is Olga, and she also goes to Calusa to the HEPSTAR program.
Great. Hi, Olga.
Thank you.
Beautiful.
So that's our story and that's our school improvement plan. Any questions?
That was a great story. Board members, Mrs. Dozier. Well, I wrote down a few questions, and when I saw him with his folder, I thought that he was going to be telling us about his data. My question is, do your students individually keep data folders?
Yes, they do.
They do? Okay. Because I haven't heard that included in the story, and I think that is so important for students at a very early age to start monitoring their progression, their success. So accolades, cheers to all of you, and thank you for what you're doing over there.
There's so much that we do, it's hard to put it all in a 10-minute presentation, but I'm sure Sebastian could stand up here for at least 15 minutes and tell you about his goals and his data folder.
We may just have to bring him back and let him share his data folder with us. Would you come back with us, Sebastian?
Yeah.
Thank you, Sebastian. Thank you. He said anytime. Great, thank you. Board members, Mrs. Morgan.
Yeah, I'll just reiterate, thank, because I made a comment about inclusion earlier. Thank you very much for sharing the inclusion story on a personal level. So thank you, Sebastian.
And I could have brought 100 more students with the same story. I can't say enough about inclusion. I know that there are some stories out there that you hear, but if you would come to my school and go into these rooms, you would have goosebumps, as I still get when I go into their rooms. It's amazing.
That brings me to my other comment. The thing that stood out in your presentation to me is I think the biggest problem teachers have and schools have is the constant change in expectations and the stuff that goes with those expectations. And you make a very, you lay out a very clear process and program for making certain that when expectations are changing, teachers are getting the development that they need and the support that they need to be, to feel successful. And so that was the other thing that really stood out in your presentation. So thank you.
We do a lot of that?
Yep.
Awesome. Did you? And I want to say thank you to that, too. And I think that we do need more of the stories from the kids because there's a lot of scuttlebutt out there about inclusion. And I know that when done planned and done correctly, it is a way of children being successful. And Sebastian really illustrated that for us today, so thank you for including that as part of your presentation.
Kids' lives are being changed drastically.
Absolutely.
For the better.
Great. Thank you so much. Miss, did you want to say something?
As we're transitioning to the next team, Island Coast, just a couple of quick things there. You know, we typically, most of these presentations are focusing on Focus Area One, which is Inspire Students to Think and Learn. This one, of course, Ms. Lowry pulled in Focus Area Two, which is really tapping into building some of those community relationships, which I think is very important. And then, as it relates to inclusion, I mean, one of the things that you see there is the passion that Ms. Heller has as a teacher. And, you know, when you go out and you talk to teachers, you really, I really feel that as we implement, we have to make sure that we have staff in place that are actually inspired to teach under these types of, you know, in this context, that they have received the proper training and they receive the proper support. So we're taking all of this in, you know, into consideration. We've moved this effort forward. So I appreciate hearing from your team, Shelley. And that leads us, we heard from elementary schools, now we're going to move to a high school. So Kristin Bueno and Island Coast. And also, I have to tell you, Kristin, I'd like an invitation also out real soon because we are in the process of building a high school and we like to, all that continuous improvement and innovation. There's a lot of neat things going on out there that, I saw it a while ago, and Dr. Bohatch talked about the improvements, but I'm sure there's been some more. I didn't get to see it fully in action, it was just getting started, so I'd like to come out and have a visit real soon. So anyway, having said that, I'll turn it over to you and your team.
Thank you, Dr. Atkins. Good afternoon, board members. Superintendent Atkins, we are thankful for the opportunity to share a snippet of our school improvement work that we are involved in this year. With me today, I have my assistant principal, Rebecca Savage, who works closely with accountability and our school improvement initiatives. I also have our teacher leader, Samantha Hutchinson, who works with all of our teachers, but real specific with one of the specific, the goals we're going to share with you today. Island Coast High School opened its doors in 2007. We sit on approximately 53 acres of land, 78 classrooms. We have laboratories, athletic facilities, we have technology labs, music labs, and technology hubs within our campus. We are happy to offer four academies, career and college-ready academies for our students. Those include the Academy of Information Technology, our Natural Resources Academy, our Marketing and Business Academy, and our Law Academy. We also offer advanced programs through dual enrollment courses. On campus, we offer six dual enrollment courses right on our Island Coast campus, so students do not have to leave to earn that college credit. They also, of course, have the opportunity to attend FSW or FGCU for dual enrollment coursework as well. We are happy to be offering the AP Capstone Program, which will open in August of 2006 for our first class to enroll in that program. So we're very happy to be offering that highly rigorous college prep program on our We have identified seven improvement goals for this year, and those seven goals align with our district strategic plan goals. We consider our SIP, of course, as our governing document, so we thought it was important to have those seven goals in place that align with all of our accountability areas. We consider the SIP our resource for all stakeholders to find the information related to the work we're engaged in and the strategies and efforts we have in place to reach those You'll notice on this slide that on the left side are the districts for strategic goals, and on the right side are our goals. We have color-coded these to show the alignment as you go through our plan for ease of reminding us of the alignment with the district initiatives, as well as being able to easily track what we're doing. We consider our SIP our playbook, so kind of like Nick Saban went into last night's game with a playbook. Our SIP is our playbook for what we are trying to accomplish and identifying the barriers that are in the way for us at this point, and then what our action plan is as we move forward throughout the year to reach those goals. This is what we call our SIP on a page, so one-page resource that reflects each goal, the barriers, and the action plan for achieving those goals. You'll notice they're color-coded, as I mentioned, so that's a quick snippet of what aligns with which of our strategic plan goals from the district. Our action plan for our academic goals, which are goals three through seven, are quite similar. So what we've decided to do today was select one goal and then walk you through that process of how we plan for meeting that goal, our action planned, and what we do for progress monitoring along the way. So going through this one goal, you'll get an idea of how we do it for each of the other goals that are listed there. We selected our goal four, which is our Math Algebra I performance, and our goal is to increase proficiency to 56%. You'll see there on the graph our trend data related to our Algebra I performance. Our most recent report reflects that we met the state average and were three points above the district average in Algebra I through our last reporting period. We're moving in the right direction. We continue the work to exceed district and state proficiency in the Algebra I area. So to reach that intended goal of 56%, we have specific structures and practices in place to get us there. And I'm going to have Ms. Savage talk to you about those structures.
Okay, good afternoon. This, the next two slides will outline our professional learning community cycles at Island Coast High School. At Island Coast, our PLCs occur two times a month. So you'll see in the cyclical image outline up on the slide, it goes in a clockwise direction from our initial meeting to our meeting that would be in a two-week cycle. You have what occurs with our various subject area teams, from our first meeting on the top to our second meeting on the bottom. And then in between those meeting times, between meeting one and two, and then back to the next meeting at the beginning of the next month in our professional learning communities. This is a, kind of a general outline of the work that our teacher teams engage in. Our academic teams use the time in a cyclical manner, and they focus on analyzing student data to drive instruction and assessment, as well as plan for intervention and extension support for all students. Teachers also give common course assessments in order to analyze student performance and also to analyze assessment quality control. This next slide is a more specific version of the previous slide, specific to Island Coast and our core academic versus our non-core courses. They still participate in the same cyclical PLC experience, just sometimes using a slightly different data tool. We want to make sure that what works with most ease for our teachers is what they're choosing to use and what they, in order to develop and analyze the data that's most pertinent to them. that's most pertinent to them. So, this more detailed panel highlights the process for establishing data that's of high quality to our teachers and from which they're able to make the most sound instructional decisions. Next, I'd like to introduce Mrs. Hutchinson, our teacher leader who facilitates our Algebra 1 PLC, Focus on Planning and Progress Monitoring with her team.
Thank you. Good afternoon. I'm the facilitator of the Algebra 1 team, and I'm going to walk you through the process of how our team progress monitors our Algebra 1 students. We have five members on our team, and our PLC actually meets weekly because we are Algebra 1. We have five members on our team. We start each meeting with a celebration. Our celebrations encourage team members to share successes, and we learn from each of the, each other during that celebration time. So, definitely start each meeting on a positive note. We use a standard planning template each week, so team members maintain focus on the four PLC questions as we work to accomplish our goal. We look at the academic plan and the essential standards to guide our instruction. We use Common Formative and Summative Assessments to gather quality data to inform our intervention and enrichment plans. We use Google Classroom and Google Drive for sharing resources. And we split our workload, so each member has a task to complete for the next week's meeting. Common Formative Assessments are used for standard tracking. As a team, we chose to use the district-created checkpoints for our progress monitoring. When we come to our meeting, we look at the data collected from each administration. We collaborate to determine in which standards we were successful and in which areas we can improve. We then plan together. Everyone is working as a team to support the needs of all Algebra 1 students. This is an example of a quality tool we use with students to progress monitor their individual data. We use Data Chats, which is another quality tool, with our students so they are aware of their own standards mastery. Students then reflect on what standards they need additional support. The standards are re-taught and reassessed, and the cycle continues to progress monitor our students and standards.
And as a school, we have the PLC structure in place to support the progress monitoring, professional development, as well as what we call ProGator Professional Learning Communities. And those are specific learning groups that focus on other areas for improvement in the school. So, areas like attendance, our lowest-performing group, our highest-performing group, and tracking graduation rate. So, we have professional learning communities, structures in place to support all those needs. You'll see in our pyramid, the bottom, the school's providing the structure. Within the departments, then, the progress monitoring is occurring through that assessment study from their data from formative and summative assessments, and then providing the instructional planning. At the classroom level, you'll see data walls used to progress monitor. And then, right up to the student level, data folders and then data chats with teachers are occurring. In that last slide, we had that Samantha just shared with you. That's one of the forms used during the data chats for students to acknowledge their proficiency and then make plans for improvement along the way. We've been fortunate to be one of the Choosing Excellence Quality Schools, and we've been able this year to begin implementing those practices, which include the data chats and using data tools to monitor progress all year long. And thank you very much for the opportunity. And again, Dr. Atkins, of course, you are invited. And after you swing by Pine Island Elementary, you can swing by us and have some fish and salad and vegetables in the west zone.
Board members, any questions or comments? Thank you very much. We appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. And now, we come to our district strategic plan update. And do you want to introduce? And Dr. Atkins will introduce the team.
Okay, we did hear a lot earlier today from Focus Area 1, a little bit from Focus Area 2, and just kind of rounding out some of the other areas of the strategic plan. We're going to start, actually, with Focus Area 5, which is Strengthen District Support Systems. And with that, Dr. Carlin and Ms. Cindy McClung. So, we'll go ahead and start with them, and then we'll move right into the next areas, which Focus Area 6, Drive Decisions with Data, and Focus Area 7, Allocate Resources Strategically. So, we'll start with 5. Dr. Carlin.
Thank you. Good afternoon, board members, Dr. Atkins and Mr. Burton. We're here today to provide you with another update on the strategic plan. At the last board briefing, you'll recall that we had a couple of teams that provided you with an update, and we're going to provide you with three more teams' updates today. So, it's a pleasure to be here with you this afternoon. So, we'll go ahead and start with Focus Area 5, which, as you'll recall, is Strengthening District Support Systems. And if you'll remember back to when we originally unveiled and the draft of our strategic plan and then came back for your approval, one of the things we talked about with Focus Area 5 was really that connection to supporting increased student learning and to provide excellent customer service to our stakeholders. So, those are kind of the two underpinnings of this particular focus area. So, as you take a look in front of you, you'll see our overall outcomes and where we stand to date. Our first two outcomes have to do with both internal and external customer satisfaction. We have started with internal satisfaction first, and we will be moving, and you'll see in our next steps, moving to external customers. We wanted to make sure our survey design was proper before we went to our external customers with that survey. Also, you'll see the third outcome has to do with our approach to systemic improvement. So, we have a program at our, in our district called Continuous Systemic Improvement, or what we call CSI LEAD. And that is an approach to systemic improvement that has been used within our schools, a few of our schools. So, we'll talk with you more about that as we move forward in the presentation today.
Good afternoon. Thank you for allowing us to be here today. It's always good to see all of you. I'm going to start with Objective 5.1, which talks about utilizing a sustained system and a systematic approach to continuous improvement within our district. The first step to this is making sure that we have professional development so that people understand what that actually means. You heard three of our NEAF Grant Training Schools, who presented today, Island Coast, Pinewood's, and Calusa Elementary are all part of the NEA Foundation Closing the Achievement Gap Grant. And Pine Island Elementary School, while not part of the grant, has also participated in the Choosing Excellence Training. So, as you heard them talk about data walls and data folders and quality tools, that is included in that training. So, we have, to date, over fifteen-hundred of our personnel within our district have been trained through the three-day, eighteen-hour initial training that combines Baldridge and Glasser quality models. And you've seen today some of the results of that training. This summer, we focused on how do we involve our departments more in quality continuous improvement and really get things moving. So, we began with our department training, looking at last fall, with, or sorry, last winter, with our winter leadership, and talked about Lean Six Sigma, which is one way of making improvements within any organization. We had Roger Chen, who is the Vice President of Organizational Transformation for Lee Memorial Health Systems, come speak to our administrators last winter. Then, this summer, we had PLC training for our Business and Finance and our Operations Division. And they began learning about Yellow Belt, Lean Six Sigma, which uses quality tools to make improvements across the organization. Our HR department has continued this. And as of now, within our, this building, we have eighty-one people who have completed Yellow Belt certification and thirteen people who have completed Advanced Yellow Belt certification. We are moving forward with Green Belt. I believe HR is having their Green Belt start this, this month, later this month. So, we're very excited to see it moving into departments as well as schools.
Just one thing I just want to mention with that. You know, not only do we have human resources, we've also got some folks in operations and also our team, myself included, Mr. Mora, Ms. Sanders, are actually, we're excited about the Green Belt training for this reason. We went through Yellow Belt, Advanced Yellow Belt, and now, we're undertaking Green Belt. The nice part about Green Belt is it gives us an opportunity to actually take a project related to the strategic plan and sit there with the trainer and actually, I think, work on implementation of this project under their guidance. And so, it helps us, give us kind of practical experience, hands-on, as we're under, you know, as we're doing the training. And also, I think it's going to have a direct benefit to the district itself. We're already trying to take the strategic plan and overlay projects that we're working on relative to the strategic plan so that we're actually, you know, putting it into action. But I think unless you get it out of your head, down on paper, putting it into phases, putting in measurable objectives, putting in due dates, timelines, and assigning responsibility, then you've just got a plan that's going to sit on the shelf. So, we're actually doing that now. I also want to recognize Dr. Pruitt. She just completed project management training and was certified. And this is over and above what you'd get in Yellow Belt. So, you know, hats off to her. So, I just want to make it clear that, you know, many people in this organization, the district office, are embracing the Tenets of Quality and the, you know, Six Sigma and the Lean system, so that you see in Lee Memorial and other organizations.
Thank you.
So, could you? Yeah. So, could you give a specific example of a category or a project that you would be applying the Yellow Belt, the Six Sigma Yellow or Green Belt to?
I can give you what we're doing. Mark and our team, you know, myself included, are taking the three-year strategic plan as it applies to student assignment and developing the project plan based on these particular principles. So, that's one right now. Now, I've sat there and dumped it on paper, then we're taking it and actually converting it into that format. But, you know, that's one example. Another example is in Human Resources, the recruitment project. All of that is, you know, something that they're working on right now through this particular training model. So, those are two just off the top of my head. And I'm sure there's others you might want to mention, but that's, those are the ones that we're really involved with right now.
Great. And I can give you a really simple, but really important example. Last year, before we had started the formal training, I completed Yellow Belt through the Sterling Organization. And one of the things that we had discovered within staff development was that we had someone spending so many hours. I can't even give you the hundreds of hours. When we would have preschool trainings, going through sign-in sheets, to the point where when we would have preschool training in August, people would sometimes not receive their in-service points until December because it took that long to hand-enter all of those names and get those points assigned. So, we went through a process where we brought in people like Brian Ebers, and we went and brought in the people who were directly involved in that process. And we took and we went through every step of that process. And we went through and said, where do we see the bottlenecks? And what are some of the things that we can do to speed this up and to free up this person to do some other work? And what resulted from that was the electronic sign-in process that we now have. So, it has, it has just made a huge difference in the time that it takes to receive your in-service points. You sign in, you're there. You receive, when you complete that course, you receive your evaluation, and you are automatically awarded those points. And it's because we went through that improvement process to help that happen.
Great example. Thank you.
The gentleman that's actually providing our training a number of years ago worked with the state of Florida on their certifications. Okay, so, I don't know, some of you, if you've been around as long as I have, it used to be months and months and months and months to get your certifications. And he came in and took a look at it and just literally took out practically all of it. So, now, it's just a matter of days or weeks before you get approval as opposed to the months that you used to wait to get your certificate. So, that's the person who's providing the training.
Absolutely.
Thank you. And those are great examples. That's, for the purpose of the audience, that's what I was looking for. Thank you.
Thank you. So, you see, there's a chart here that shows you the percentage of personnel within the district that have training in either Choosing Excellence or Six Sigma or some sort of initial quality training. So, you can see, we have eighteen-point-one percent at this point who have at least six hours' training. Twenty-three-point-eight percent have had at least an initial hour's worth of training. So, we're focused on making sure that everyone has the opportunity to participate in something that's meaningful to their position. You heard a little bit about CSI LEAD, or Continuous Systemic Improvement. The program goals for this are to provide our district with the opportunity to self-evaluate and then to make improvements. And we do this through a collegial process. I would like to say that it's district-wide. We're not there yet, but we've had several schools participate, and we hope to involve departments in this as well. The organization or the school presents or does a self-evaluation and answers some questions in an application that are involved with the seven areas of criteria in the Baldridge Criteria. And that process, it's a bit time-consuming, but it's an amazing self-evaluation practice. Then, a team from another school visits and provides feedback on those same seven areas and says, here are the areas where we see you're doing a really terrific job. Here are your strengths, and here are some opportunities for improvement, and provide actionable feedback in those areas. Once the school has gone through that process and has completed a PDSA on one of those opportunities for improvement, they then are, have the opportunity to participate in CSI LEAD 2. This is a much more in-depth application, and it is a much more in-depth interview process. It's, this visit is completed by current and former Sterling examiners. Right now, we have more than twenty personnel within our district who over the past ten years have gone through the Sterling Examiner process. And for those people who have done that, they know it can be quite grueling, but it is an amazing learning experience. So, these examiners will go to one of the schools for CSI LEAD 2. And we have had three schools who have so far participated in that process, Pinewood's Elementary, Challenger Middle, and Mariner High School. Dr. Robert Butts is going through the Sterling Examiner process this year, and that's partially due to his experience through the CSI 2. And he had hoped to be here today. And he said, well, I can come, but I have a choice open house tonight, and my assistant principals will tell me it's okay, but I really don't want to do that to them. And I'm very happy that he considered them. So, he did give me permission to share some information from that site visit. So, you see here a banner that hangs in the courtyard at Mariner High School, which talks about their mission and their vision. And the team consisted of Dr. Teri Kenzie, Dr. Shelley Halsted, Dr. Carlos Negron, and myself. So, we went through the application. We did interviews with the administrative staff, teachers, students, parents, volunteers. And the overall strengths that were presented to the school included a clear focus on their students, which is Category 3 customers, and really strong internal communication system, which is Category 1 Leadership. And then, a culture of caring that was evident in everything that we heard from those interviews. And that goes to leadership and also to workforce because there was a real strong sense of caring among the staff and support for each other. Some of the opportunities for improvement were to increase the proactive listening. We didn't hear from anyone that they didn't know what was happening, but the opportunity was to go out and seek information before it was asked. The second one was to increase use of comparative data and to use their PDSA process and their data to drive instruction more uniformly across the school. Here are some quotes from some of the people in that process. And my favorite one came from a student. And he said he had moved here from New York. He said, "In New York, you went to class for the first few minutes, and then you left, and you went out on the street, and you sold drugs because you needed money, and that was how you got money." He said, "And I came down here, and I kind of tried that." He said, "And I came down here, and I kind of tried that." He said, "It didn't fly." He said, "You know, there's really love in this school. This principal came and spoke to me himself. These teachers and this principal treated me as though I were their child." He said, "A kid needs love. That's all we really need." And it was just amazing to hear him speak to that. So I asked Robert to provide some insight into what he found most helpful about that process. He said, "There really was a power in that process, because there was total stakeholder involvement. The leadership team worked together to gather data and to complete that application, and it was a true learning experience for them. And then that reflection, the process and procedure, occurred during that application process, so that they understood their gaps. And they were able to meet with me each day and talk about what were the things we were still looking for." So they appreciated that. He said, "It was great to understand that stakeholders really appreciate what they do, that the administration had a focus on communication." When we went to them, as an examiner, you're looking for opportunities for actionable feedback. And generally, communication's a gimme. You walk in, you know you're going to have an opportunity in communication. We could not find an internal communication opportunity for them. And when we sat down with him at the end of the day, he said, "My first-year's principal, I sat down with my admin team, and I said, 'I am really tired of hearing how nobody knows what's going on in this school. What are we going to do?'" And they fixed it, and they did it really, really well. And they understand now that they really need to look at using their results with fidelity, looking at that information as they plan for improvement. Our next objective is ensuring that all employees provide internal and external customers with outstanding customer service. So this past October, we had our first internal survey, and it was asking people who have communication with this building, have you received excellent customer service? So there was one question related to customer service, and it said, "To what extent do you agree with the statement, 'I have received excellent customer service from this department.'" So the school and department personnel had the opportunity to complete it for multiple departments, and the results are currently being disaggregated and analyzed by department for the strengths and opportunities for improvement. Our baseline of agree and strongly agree was that 86.3% said they believe they have received excellent customer service. So we're looking to build on that. We also have an advanced ed survey that was originally completed in 2013 as part of our certification process and accreditation process, excuse me, and was repeated this past October, November, and closed right before Christmas break. So we looked at parents, student, and staff information, and we looked at four particular questions that really align with continuous improvement. The first one for parents was, "Our school's purpose statement is formally reviewed and revised with involvement from parents." We had a slight increase. "Our school has established goals and a plan for improving student learning." We had a decrease. We do know that we had a much smaller response rate this time than we did in 2013. It was a requirement for our accreditation in 2013, so we pushed for that. We had 21% of our parents had completed the survey at that time, 6% completed at this time. So we know we have some work to do there. We also know that we need to get the information out there of what we are doing for student improvement and that we really are working to improve student learning. With our staff, those numbers had a slight increase again with the purpose, and then a decrease again with continuous improvement goals. So we need to get the word out there. We know the focus needs to be on what are we doing that's aligned with our district strategic plan and how are we moving forward with that?
So with all of that said, we always like to look at lessons learned. If we're going to expect systemic improvement, then it starts with examining our own practices. What are the things we've done well and we're proud of? And what are those lessons we've learned throughout the process? So the first one has to do with systemic implementation, making sure that when we deploy professional development, not only do we do that with the schools, but also making sure that that is hand-in-hand with our departments. And particularly, when we talk about things like lean, Six Sigma, that type of training, CSI LE, all of that going together and making sure that we're consistently deploying that throughout both the schools and the departments. So lesson learned, and we'll pick up on that and already have. Second one has to do with alignment, and alignment is a catch-all for just making sure, again, that all of our work is in alignment. When we look at our improvement plans, making sure we know our schools have dynamic school improvement plans. You've seen much evidence of that at the board meetings. Just looking at our department improvement plans and making sure that they're tightly aligned to our strategic plan. Dr. Atkins, under his leadership, has really forwarded that work and making sure that that alignment continues. So lessons learned, and we're already moving on that as well. The surveys. So it sounds great to give a survey until you give it, and then you stop back and you go, wow, that didn't come out quite the way we thought. Maybe we need to look at design, let's look at the number of questions. Sometimes we have survey fatigue, we go too far, so people drop off, they don't answer all the questions. So we have some work to do with survey design, and we'll refine that before we deploy that to our external customers. Another next step, really looking at that focus on system process improvement, and that is essential, making sure that we continue to look at ways to have two-way communication with stakeholders. We try to get information out, but it's really important to elicit that from our variety of customers. Really focusing, like Dr. Atkins said, on increasing our business process efficiency, getting better and better, getting leaner and leaner at what we do, and also maximizing the use of technology. As Ms. McClung talked before, one of the initiatives she mentioned was just the implementation of the sign-in process and making sure that that was done electronically when we went to in-services. I'll throw myself under the bus and say it started with my innocent question of, why does that have to be paper? And I was told it was statutorily required, I told there was a state board policy, and so I said, well, if you could provide that authority to me, that'll make me a believer. And we looked, and we looked, and we looked, and we couldn't find one. And I said, so that tells me it's the way we do it, and now we need to look at how we can do it. And so that simple question, just asking the question resulted in a process improvement. So sometimes it's those big innovative ideas, and sometimes it's just that small question that's asked that can lead to greater business efficiency. So another next step, really focusing on innovation. That's one of my favorite things. I always say my fifth strength is futuristic, so I'm always looking for a way to make something better. So really looking at, how do we get great ideas, not only from our leaders, but also from the trenches? How do we reach down and say, okay, give us your great ideas, because we want to act on them? And then how do you vet them? How do you say, oh, with all those great ideas, what is going to give us the biggest bang for our buck? And then that last piece, which I'm really big on, is ROI, return on investment. How do we know when we invest our resources that we're getting the best bang for our buck? So we have some next steps, and that's the work we intend to do with Focus Area 5. Now I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Phyllis, who's going to talk with you a little bit about Focus Area 6.
Thank you. You're welcome. In Focus Area 6, I'm going to ask that Cindy, if you would just drive, please. Thank you. So if you would move to the next slide, then there we go. I just want to talk again about survey. We, for Focus Area 6, have a very simple survey. It is three questions. They are primarily the fundamental basis of where we decided this year to begin with asking all of our instructional staff members about what they had and what they needed. So when we gave it for the very first time, which was our baseline, that was in May, and we had 16% of our instructional staff who participated, and we increased it to 26%. So even though it is not one of our goals, obviously, when we give it this spring, it is our desire. Even though we are at a point where it is now statistically valid, we are certainly much more interested in increasing the participation. We can go to the next slide. The first question really is asking our instructional staff, do you have a data system that you need? Didn't ask them anything about whether they like it or not, but it says, do you have a system? And so there is good news here. The baseline said that 83% of the instructional force said, yes, we have data systems. And then when we gave it again in the fall, it had met our target for the year. We now have 88% of our teachers who say, yes, we have a data system. The second question starts to get a little more to the heart of the issue when we ask them the question, do you know how to use the data system? Now, I want you to think about this and the timing of that. The data system, when we first asked, 85.9% of our teachers said, yes, I have data systems and I know how to use them. So when we gave it in October, we had just finished implementing a new gradebook, Focus. And we certainly knew that teachers were struggling and suffering with that implementation. You couldn't go an hour of a day without hearing another example, particularly if you have a daughter in the system who would call at least once a week to have a meltdown with me, as though I was personally responsible. And so I was thoroughly expecting there to be a huge drop-off in that number of, do I know how to use the data system? And it was not. If you will see, it actually increased the percentage of our instructional staff to 87%, who said, I know how to use it. So there are a whole group of other questions that our committee thinks that we need to move forward in future surveys with about, do you know how to use all of these options? In other words, sometimes people don't know what they have in front of them. But we're just starting here with baseline. And our third question really does focus on, why would you have a data system? Do you know how to use it? Do you know how to use the data that you get from that system? And so we began with 82% of our teachers saying, yes, I know how to use it. And we have increased it by, just a half a year later, by 4.5%. We are very close to our target for the year on that one. And once again, I think that's related to the prior issue of, so when we start to ask more deeply about, you know, specific things, our numbers, our baseline, will probably change. So if you'll go to the next slide, wanted to talk about, on the first time that we gave the three survey questions, there was no opportunity for open response. When we gave it the second time, there was, and I was very pleased that 10% of our participants actually provided responses in the open response. And so we spent some time clustering those. And these were the three most prominent or frequent asks or comments that were made. The first one had to do with requesting training. And specifically, that training request would break into two. Number one, they wanted time to learn. When they went to training, they wanted it to be longer or to have really, you know, application opportunities where they were supported when they left that training. And the second one really dovetails very closely with that, talked about the quality of the training design. When you go, you have a short period of time to learn to do something that you know is very important, but you leave frustrated, because now your level of awareness has been increased, but your level of mastery is not. The second, now remember, this was in October, this was eight weeks after we had implemented the new gradebook, and I really got just a little concerned about looking at the number of dissatisfied people with the new gradebook. But I think that we have to keep something in mind. Number one is it was change. And at the middle school level in particular, it was change, it was technological change that was coming at them in many different directions. You also had the Chromebook implementation, and, you know, there was just a lot. But here's the interesting point that I want to, that was actually my proudest moment. I feel certain that when we give this survey in the spring, that will be a completely different number, because the fact that the teachers spoke up collectively in this survey was data that then the superintendent took and worked closely with IS and said, we have to change this. You, here are, according to Tauck and the teachers, these are the things that are the greatest stressors in a teacher's day, and we can fix these, and we will do it, we're going to do it now. And all the principals and the teachers had been hearing over and over, but that's the way the program is. And a couple of those things, like the timeout feature, has been changed. It used to be timed out in 23 minutes, 16 minutes, it was something. And if a teacher got timed out, everything that she had started in that gradebook could be lost. And so even though we haven't been able to completely reconcile that problem, what he has been able to do is have it re-engineered, so that at least they are not timed out within an hour. They have an hour before they have to. And those are things that we, improvements that we know in a teacher's life, does it make a difference? Yeah. All right. And the last collection, or last category of ideas, was the data request. And specifically, these were the most frequent kinds of requests. Our teachers are asking for efficient management of data. Our teachers are asking for integrated systems for their data. They want time to be able to use their data, and they want to know exactly what is expected of them to be able to do with their data. It was like, oh, they get it. I understand exactly. And those are, you know, those are some very big asks, but some things that we need to go to work on. And the last slide is simply a list of things that we have, through Focus Area 6 and in working with other departments, have delivered, we call them our deliverables, things that have gone out to our staff. We have started, we have created in Castle, the first four of these items, the Tier IV buses have a daily collection system that is automated, that tells us exactly how our last tier of buses, what's our on-time, what's our dismissal rate. Then the second one is, of course, you've heard a lot today about the Standards Mastery Program, our ability to monitor standards. The intervention system has been introduced across the district, and the scheduler is a huge big deal for schools that use the intervention as one of their strategies for increasing student achievement. Castle has a system within it that they can use the standard data to automatically place the students. And it's really a bigger time saver for the secondary schools and elementaries, but we do have some elementaries that are interested in starting to use it. And then, of course, there were the Focus deliverables, and then there has been training for Castle and for all things Focus that is going on all through the first semester. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Toiber.
Thank you, Ms. Fisher. Thank you. One of the questions that I had when you said, when you asked the question, how familiar am I with my data system? Did the question ask more specifically what that definition meant? In other words, is it the system as a whole? Is it Castle? Is it Focus? Is it Pinnacle? Is it the fact that they're using their logins, you know, their sign-in?
We did not. You see the question on the slide exactly as it was asked, because one of the things that we discovered in trying to craft this question is that depending on what you do, what do you teach, will depend on what is the data system that you use. If you're an ESE teacher, you might spend the majority of your life in the enriched system. But if you are an elementary math teacher, your data for years now has been in the Performance Matters. That's what you depend most on. If you are in an emerging area that we've just started to collect standards data on, you may be using the Castle Standards Tracker. So we have lots of different tools that are out there. The question was, do you have what you need? Do you have what you think you need?
Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Any other questions? No. Thank you very much.
Okay. I invite Mark to come back up. Yes. Please. Yeah, please. Watch out for him. Okay. I'll give Mark a few minutes to come back up. The next area was Focus Area 7, which is allocating resources strategically. If you recall, within our focus area, there were four different outcomes, which are in your slides right now, all of which were geared around utilizing our resources more efficiently. All of which were geared around utilizing our resources more efficiently to drive resources where we would like them to be, which is mostly in the classroom, and then making sure that our physical plant or our physical resources were appropriately resourced in order to have the seats that we need available to house the students that we, you know, that we have in our district, and be able to accommodate the growth that we know that we have in our district each year. So, four outcomes within our area.
Certainly. The first outcome is student station capacity maintenance of a hundred percent of the capacity for the student enrollment that we're projecting. It's basically looking at leveraging the resources that we currently have, and our buildings are one of the greatest resources that we do have. Of course, you all understand, that's a great challenge for the district because some of the capacity is not where the students are. So, to leverage it comes at a great expense, basically to our Transportation Department. And when you look at outcomes like these, you've got to think, "What else does this drive?" And Dr. Atkins mentioned this evening, this afternoon, the Three Years Strategic Plan for Student Assignment. And that obviously is looking at this and trying to figure out, "How do we leverage that capacity? How can we do it efficiently?" And there are different ways to do student assignment, and that's what we're looking at. The other thing it drives is capital. To maintain a hundred percent capacity for the students we're projecting over the next ten, fifteen, twenty years, we obviously need to build schools. So, this goal in itself, this outcome drives many different things. For one, figuring out how to do things efficiently and getting ourselves ready for future growth. I'm happy to say, at this particular point, we do have the capacity we need for all of our students, but there's obviously some growing need, hence our need for a school in the South Zone. So, that is outcome, the first outcome in this particular Focus Area.
If we can go on to the objectives, there were seven objectives that we had in two major categories. The first category was about compliance, equity, and efficiency. And we grouped four objectives within there. Couple of them had to do, of course, with class size and with comparability, meaning that our resources, for comparability, that means our resources for our Title I schools, as far as the general fund is concerned, is allocated the same way that resources in non-Title I schools are allocated. Or that is to say, we're not supplanting our federal funds or diverting our general fund resources away from them because they have other resources to deal with. So, we have to make sure that we are allocating our resources effectively, but, and equitably across all of our schools, regardless of their Title I status. Also, we want to make sure that a hundred percent of our district schools meet class size requirement. That is been, that has been a major area of focus for the board in wanting to make sure that we are allocating our resources in order to meet that. The debt ratio, and we talked about that a little bit earlier today, as a percentage of our property tax funds, we want that to decrease by eight percent annually. Of course, that speaks to the financial stability of the district in making sure that our capital resources can be utilized in other ways besides just paying debt for the district. And then, the next three objectives within our, within our Focus Area had to do with revenue generation. Or that is, how we were going to be able to pull more funds into the district. We were trying to earn more investment revenue, and so, we had, we had, the board did agree to a new investment policy within the past year that would be able to increase our investment earnings for us. We wanted to be able to generate new areas of revenue, so we had an objective in there about a dollar amount that we wanted to generate by the year 2017, using new methods that we don't, that we did not currently have at that point. And then, wanting to make sure that we increased funding for our preventative maintenance across the district. Many conversations we've had about that in terms of how that funding in that area was lacking, and if we wanted to make sure to be able to utilize our resources effectively, we had to increase what we were doing in that area. So, those are major categories. So, now let's talk a little bit about the results that we've seen within each of those. Within comparability, each year, including in FY15, we have met that requirement, and again, our target for FY16 is one hundred percent. And based on our data that we have now, we fully expect that we will meet that. As far as class size compliance is concerned, in FY15, we did miss our target. There was one school that was out of class size compliance. So, you see that our percentage was ninety-eight point eight percent for that year. And I also did want to point out that, remember, class size compliance is measured in October, and then throughout the rest of the year, the state does give us some flexibility in order to come outside of the regular compliance due to growth and several different factors that they determine that, yes, you can come outside of compliance with that. So, you see that throughout the year, the numbers do go down, so that at the end of the fiscal year, we were actually at ninety point six percent compliance. But based on when the state takes our measurement, we were at ninety-eight point eight percent at that time.
Just something I want to mention about that. One of the things about class size compliance that makes us extremely challenging, as you know, is that we currently have a teacher shortage nationally, in fact, internationally. So, even if we have the dollars to meet the class size amendment, we may not have the talent to do it. Some of the decisions that the team over here makes that make us fall short, slightly short of that target, is a decision in terms of what's in the best interest of students. Is it in the best interest of students to split a class out on a barrier island and hire somebody mid-year that may not be as qualified as the current teacher, or to let the class go a little bit over the cap and take the hit here? And in this case, they decided to go with, go with the original teacher, keep the class intact, and really making a decision that was really in the best interest of students. This is going to continue. I'm telling you guys, it is going to continue to be a significant challenge moving forward, meeting the class size, just to get the talent to meet the class size, regardless of the funding. I'm not even talking funding, I'm talking about the talent to meet the class size amendment.
And if you don't mind, Dr. Atkins, I'd add on, as far as capacity in our schools and the number of student stations we have, when we went to the class size amendment, we lost about twenty-five percent of our capacity in our schools. So, we've got a diminished student station count in our schools because of the amendment.
Why is it primarily just because of, why is that?
Well, you went from a classroom that could traditionally hold up to thirty-five, forty students, let's say, for instance, at the high school level.
Physical structure of the building.
Right. They're built to hold that many kids by SREF standards. And now, we're saying that we can only put twenty-five students, let's say, in an algebra tour or geometry class, where in the past, we might have put up to thirty-five. So, we've actually decreased the number of student stations per classroom in those schools because of the class size amendment. Now, we do have flexibility because we measure at the class level average, and we do have schools that have more than twenty-five students in there. But, as the measurement goes, as the amendment calls for, we've reduced our capacity.
For example, you know, when I was a principal at Paul Lawrence Nummer Middle School, the number of students that I carried in that building was anywhere between eleven fifty and twelve hundred students. And touted some of the lowest class sizes in the district at the time. Currently, if you look at Paul Lawrence Nummer Middle School, I don't know the exact numbers, but it would be probably approximately nine hundred students is what the carrying capacity would be there. So, that's just one example of, has nothing to do with the structure of the building. It has everything to do with the class size amendment. So, twelve hundred down to nine hundred, just like that.
The next progress item here is in regards to equitable utilization of our facilities. Again, going back to being good stewards of the buildings that we have. And the goal was to reduce the percentage of schools that are five percent above or below the utilization rate of the zone average. So, that's basically looking at the West Zone, East Zone, and South Zone at each level, and looking at what we have for capacity and how we're utilizing it at the level. The FY14 baseline was forty-one point three percent. So, we had quite a few schools that were out of that variance level, and that counted for thirty-one of the seventy-five schools that we assigned students to. Now, that seventy-five number, you've got to keep in mind, are the schools that are part of our school choice student assignment system. We do have schools on the barrier islands, as well as some of our special centers that are not part of that, and their enrollment's a bit out of our control. So, that was the FY14 baseline, and we have a lot of control of that in our student assignment system. That's one of the beauties of it. The FY15 target was thirty point seven percent, and that means moving it from thirty-one to twenty-three schools being out of that variance level. And in FY15, we actually ended up with twenty-one point three percent of our schools. And the target for this year is sixteen percent, and at the last FDE period, we were at eight percent. So, what we've really done with this is taken a hard look at how we assign our students, how we set up program capacity, and do a little bit more wiser in the way that we assign students, so that we leverage our buildings equitably. When you overutilize a building, it wears out sooner, and it reduces its lifespan, and we're being cognizant of that with this particular goal and objective.
Okay. And then, of course, the debt ratio, we spoke about earlier. We had a target in there to reduce that debt ratio due to refinancings and the growth of the tax rule. We were able to do that. The target was forty-two percent. We did not hit the target. We actually got to forty-three percent. But, as of October two thousand fifteen, we were at forty-two percent. So, we continue to try to hit that target.
But again, that's just a result of property values.
It's a result of both property values and the, and our refinancings. As far as our new revenue generation, investment earnings per a thousand dollars of revenue, we were trying to increase that a minimum of five percent. And so, we, our baseline was two dollars and forty-three cents per thousand dollars, and that was one point six million dollars. So, that was the first year of our new policy going into place. So, our target for this upcoming year then would be two dollars and fifty-five cents per thousand. So, we are going to track to see, are we going towards that target? And we're making good progress towards that at this point. As far as new revenue generated by new methods by 2017, our baseline for that still is yet to be determined. There were, the first one, of course, was the naming rights policies that we were looking forward to putting into play. We're not in play with those yet, so as soon as we are in play with those, then we'll have a baseline that we can work, you know, that we'll have, and then continue to work towards increasing that each year.
Just a quick, I'm sorry, a quick comment. Part of the Phase One reorganization that I want to bring, that I'm bringing forward to you has to do with the position that's related to naming rights, so that we can actually capitalize on that and have a position that's actually focused specifically on generating revenue by utilizing that policy, naming rights, to garner revenue for the district. Mr. Scott, who will, he'll come and, he's on the, he's the community chair of the Financial Advisory Committee, and he's going to come and speak to this board in a couple of weeks, and he'll give you some, an update. But he, that committee is focused on this particular policy, and they have some really good ideas that we didn't even think about, such as digital rights and things like that that they would like to incorporate in. So, we're anxious to get started, but we do want to get that position in place, actually this semester. So, not even wait until summer, but getting in place now. Sorry, go ahead.
And then, last, our funding for preventive maintenance. We were able to increase that, as you see in FY15, our actual results based on the increase in the tax rule and trying to rearrange some of the priorities of other things that we had within the capital plan. So, we did meet that. Our target for FY16, though, we are falling short of that right now, based on the revenue that we have in the plan. So, we'll continue to try to work towards that. So, those are overview of all the objectives and the outcomes in Focus Area Seven, and our progress towards them at this point.
Very much. Board members, questions, comments? Thank you very much. Thank you.
I certainly appreciate the patience. I know we've given you a lot of information, but we felt it important that to give the schools time to report, and then also give you an update in terms of three areas of our strategic plan. The other area that we had planned to update you on is Focus Area One, which you did get some of that in the school plan. But we do believe that we're going to have better data coming back next month as it relates to the, to that particular Focus Area. But, aligned with Focus Area One, we do want to talk to you about school grades and the graduation rate. And having said that, I'll turn it over to Sirado Ralph and Patty Elkin.
Thank you, Dr. Atkins.
Good afternoon, board members. Dr. Atkins, we're happy to be here this afternoon. I know you've gotten a lot of information, and you may be on a little bit of overload right now, so one more PowerPoint to go. Patty?
Good afternoon. So, as you're aware, we're going to talk a little bit about school grades. Remember, these are simulation grades. They have not released the preliminary grades. This is all based back, if you go to Senate Bill sixteen forty-two, that really provided that framework for what was recently approved. Last Wednesday, at the state board meeting, they finally, and I say finally, approved the rule for the calculation of last year's school grade. So, we do have that information. One of the pieces that was part of that rule is the scale. And as you'll see, the scale is there on the screen before you. In the notes to the PowerPoint, you may have seen that we shared the scale from previous years, and they did adjust that scale a little bit for this first release of school grades. The timeline, as we know, the board approved the rule last Wednesday, but there are thirty-four calendar days that have to pass before that rule goes into effect. Yesterday, there was a conference call with the commissioner, who reiterated this fact and reminded districts that school grades would not be released in a preliminary form until at least February nineteenth. In addition to the school grades at that time, the district grade will also be released. The question was asked, "Will it be on the ninth?" And as you can imagine, they were kind of a little, somewhere around the ninth, as close to that as possible. So, we will keep our eyes open and look for that information. After that, of course, you know, we go back to statute that says the targeted release of school grades will be each summer. So, we'll get our last year grade in February, and then this year, the fifteen, sixteen, if all goes well, we'll receive that sometime this summer. Probably, if it's historically the same as it has been, it'll be late June, early July. According to the simulation, these are the changes, and what we put on the slide was the 2014 grade and the 2015 grade. And you'll see, there were slight changes, few less As, few less Bs. According to the simulation, more C grades. Our number of D grades stayed the same, and happily, we have far less F school grades. We also shared that information for you by level. And in the backup to your board agenda, there was an itemized school-by-school detailed list that shared historically, for the past number of years, what those school grades were for every school by level.
On this slide, I wanted to take a few minutes to celebrate with you our schools and differentiated accountability. We spent a lot of time last fall talking about those schools and what we were doing to support those schools. I think we also talked about that at one of our briefings. And as you can see from this slide, we had several of those schools to make huge, huge gains. And I think that is an opportunity for us to celebrate and to really be proud of the success those schools have. While we still have a ways to go, but, and we want to continue to improve, we do want to reward those schools and be proud of the successes that they have made so far. Those schools have not stopped working, along with all of the rest of our schools. We'll continue to work, and we'll continue to make improvements, but we have made some great changes, and we will continue to strive to improve those successes and to tweak those areas of improvement that we've already made. There were some notes at the bottom of the slide telling you, based on the rule last year, that you could only drop one letter grade. So, while that does show some improvements, some of the schools made some really, really huge, huge gains. So, I think that is just showing you the successes that Lee County is making. On the next slide is again showing you the cut scores, and we talked about this at our December meeting, but these were approved, so we wanted to just bring that back to your attention again, because this is showing you the strong leadership that we have in the schools, the staff, the dedication of the staff, the alignment of the standards, working on the curriculum, and the, just the strong effort that our staff is putting forth on a daily basis, and the support of the community and the families and the students to ensure that they're being successful. Even though that we have the rigor that is going on and the changes, we still are being so successful. And again, this is showing you our ELA percentages, and on the next slide, the same for math. I had sent out earlier last week the graduation rates, so that you were aware of that information. And in the notes at the bottom, I wanted you to be aware that while in the news, it does show that we did have a slight drop, I wanted you to be aware that that includes the charter schools in there. So, when we do see that drop, I want you to be aware that we do have some great things to be proud of in our schools. Our schools are being very targeted. They are really focusing on our students, and they're monitoring the individual child. And I think that really shows in the next slide. When you're looking at our individual schools, we have some very high-performing schools. Even though we did have four schools to drop, our have four schools to drop, our schools are targeting the individual child. They're looking at them. They're making sure they're coding the student. They're aligning their, their programs and their classes to ensure that they're on the right track for graduation. They, they have a focus of what the child wants to do. They're focused on college, or are they going out into the workforce? They want to make sure that the courses that that child is enrolled in, they're going to be successful. And this aligns with the, the plan that Dr. Atkins is going to talk about later on, of how we want to make sure our standards are aligned, and what we're doing to make sure that we're meeting the needs of all of our children. Do you have any questions?
Board members? I think not. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, moving right along. Now, we have an opportunity. Mr. Martin, would you address public comment for us, please?
The board policy provides the opportunity, at this point in the meeting, to address the board concerning any matter on this briefing meeting's agenda. The subject of comment is limited to the items on the briefing meeting agenda. The time allotted per speaker is three minutes.
Thank you. Is there anyone on the right side of the auditorium who would like to speak? Mr. Fox and Mrs. Krakenbush. Mr. Fox, please approach the podium.
Thank you, board. Thank you, board. I hope everyone had a good holidays, and welcome back. Certificates of participation, they're haunting us once again. I cannot believe this board is actually entertaining doing this. It is the single worst thing you could possibly do. You just heard that the property values are going up. Well, guess what? Property values go up, and then they go down. But if you raise your debt, and property values go down, guess what? You're left holding the bag, and this district will be seriously financially harmed. You can't do this. This is not responsible governance of a major institution in this county. The environment out there is very good. You have very good sales tax revenues. Would have generated August, I think, something like nine million dollars if a sale, half cent sales tax was in place. It's very, very good. And that's where this district should be going after, instead of, in good times, borrowing money and putting it on a credit card and building a bunch of schools, spending three hundred thousand dollars to do the process, and I was reading through the agenda with the ability to move the principal payments into the future, like was done, like was done in two thousand and five. This is really not what this school district should be doing at all. None. Guys, it's time to retire the debt. It's time to get the half-cent sales tax. Build one school at a time. You're going to borrow a whole bunch of monies. You can build Lehigh, Benita, the middle school. That's going to take how much staff to handle all that done at one time. If you do one school at a time, you don't need to add staff. You don't need to add stress. You don't need to add debt. And it's the way to go. This school, this will grow naturally. Why are you doing this? Why are you, why are you even entertaining more certificates of participation? You wouldn't give your kid a credit card and just say, "Go do whatever you want"? No. Go build a house with your credit card? No, that's not the way to do it. This history hasn't learned in twenty-five years, debt is a bad thing. Why are you pursuing this? It's time to change what this district does. Pay as you go. The half-cent sales tax is a must. Anyways, borrowing is unsustainable. I mean, sooner or later, you're going to reach a debt limit with seventy-five percent of the, of your revenues, or whatever that is. You're going to reach it anyways. The simple fact is, the district is growing in student population faster than it's retiring its debt. It's like the Titanic. It's taking on water faster than they can pump it out. Okay? You simply cannot jeopardize, you can't mortgage the future. I mean, Dr. Atkins, you came to this job with a big lead weight called debt, and so did previous superintendent. Why are you going to leave the next superintendent, and the next board, and the next generation of children with a huge debt? Sooner or later, it's got to say, "We'll stop." Sooner or later. It's just a matter of whether you're going to do it beforehand, before it's a cruc-
Mr. Fox, your time's up, sir.
Thank you. Thank you. Ms. Krakenbush?
Thank you for all of your work. And I've heard so many great stories today about what schools are trying to do to improve. One of the things that struck me about our teacher shortage, it's a national situation, and one wonders, where did it come from? And it doesn't come from not having Wild Hair Day, or having Pajama Day, or any of those kinds of things. We have to look at the core problem. And that is, the teachers don't feel as though their work is being done properly. They don't feel of value to the work they put in every day. Some of the things that bother them include the bad curriculum, Common Core, and high-stakes testing, and the Common Core curriculum in math. They're obtuse, and we need to find some better standards. And I know we're working on that together. We have a lack of classroom flexibility because of Common Core and the procedures that are required. In testing, we've got the VAM scores that unfairly rate the teachers and students. And heck, we're getting the scores in February from last year. What is this? It's ridiculous. We feel that their, their time is being robbed in the classroom, so they don't have time to teach. There's too much time also in the administration. I listen to report after report and data, and I'm a data person. I love working on data. However, it seems like we might be doing paralysis by analysis, rather than attacking the main things that are going to cause our students to have better education. Now, I was hoping that I could persuade all of you to write a letter to the legislature to tell them about the problems they're causing in the local districts by their interference. Many of the districts have done so, and I invite you to join in, so they know that we are not able to function with their unfunded mandates. We also need to return to local control as part of that. And one of the issues that's being presented in the legislature this year is a return to an elected commissioner. And I invite you to explore that as part of your legislative agenda in support of, of doing that. Thank you so much for all your efforts, and together we might succeed.
Okay, board member comments. Mr. Toyber?
I have none this evening, or this afternoon.
Mrs. Morgan?
I just have one. We had the student advisory meeting, and the students were, had a, had a robust conversation about Chromebooks, the assortment of platforms used by teachers, used by schools, used across the district. Essentially, the questions were, the variable platforms within the classroom, within the school, and across the district, and also web access controls within the classroom, within the school, and within the district. And so, students asked that staff members with expertise or able to answer their specific questions attend, and I forwarded those questions to Dr. Atkins, and he has arranged for those people to present at the next student advisory. So thank you very much, and those are my comments.
Wonderful. Thank you. Mrs. Dozier?
And I'm going to try to be brief, but I feel it's important to report on the Construction Advisory Committee, since much of their work is being done on discussion about the school in the South. So we met on the sixth. There was a discussion. We all received a copy of the, the plat, or the, the area that we have purchased, or the area that we're talking about purchasing. I made the wrong statement. And it went from multiple people that actually were, were responsible for ownership to just a few. I believe that site is still being looked into. However, there's another site that has come available, that I believe Mr. Mora had a meeting with that individual, or according to, according to Mr. Snell, that was going to take place. And I don't know whether it has or not.
It did.
But, okay, thank you. The, the Walmart site has some pluses and some minuses. Any piece of property we buy is going to have some ups and some downs. When Mr. Snell presented to the group, the Walmart property basically had a lot more positives than it did negative. And one of the positive things that, that I think came out of the meeting that they are doing is, they are trying to get on the front end, with whatever property we use, staff is trying to form a partnership upfront, so that we can do anything that might mitigate any situations that might develop. And we already know that if you have property that is in the DRGR, which this property is, you're automatically going to have the twenty-twenty people out there. And so they have already kind of met with these people, talked to these people about possibly some of the programs, very much mirroring what goes on at FGCU. And all of a sudden, you've got a partnership going on, and it's a win-win for everyone. The problem is, there's a lot of, you know, the back part is unusual. Out of the sixty-eight acres, there's, the back portion is in the DRGR. The truck traffic for the first year could be a problem because of the, the mining that's going on, but they think that that's going to end within a year. And I remember sitting on this board when we were redoing Sanibel, and we kept talking about dirt isn't cheap. You know, some people, you might think that dirt's cheap, but dirt's not cheap. And because some of the property that we're looking at is in lowlands, and we're going to have to build it up according to standards and so forth. Benita Springs, they've, as I said, staff is also working with the people in Benita Springs, the powers that be down there, and they agree, they've already agreed, if we use that site to put in a red light, and they would be the ones that would, that would take ownership of that and move forward with that. The design team is preparing a cost analysis to bring to the superintendent and to the board, which I, I think that your question of fifty-seven million was right on target today, because I think part of what is bracing that fifty-seven million is the fact that we're going to be impacted by lowlands anywhere down there, any of the properties that we're looking at. And it's going to cost us more, because we've got to build the property up to build. So, and like I said, dirt ain't cheap. So that's one of the problems, but I didn't feel like it was right to jump in there at that time and say that. So I think that, that if you want more in-depth information, I tried to make a few notes, but if you want more in-depth information, I would encourage you to go to the website and read the minutes from this meeting. And one thing that I hesitate saying is that, but I, I mean, it's part of the discussion, and that is, you know, we were going to open up the site at Estero High School. It was going to be a, a village there to begin with, in Portables. And then, in the seventeen, eighteen school year, the school would open. Well, because we don't have property, because we have not moved forward in identifying the property, and starting with our, with all of our, you know, work that we have to do to get ready, there is a possibility that it might push that, that date out farther. And instead of opening in seventeen, eighteen, it might be the middle of the school year. I see you shaking your head, but-
I'm just telling you, no. You know, that, that was a directive. You know, we need to, these, this land, I mean, we need to start cranking this up. We can't delay it again.
I agree. I agree. I couldn't agree more.
You know, and I don't know what, you know, I don't know how long it takes to, to make these negotiations, but there has to be, you know, there's a deadline that was put out nine months ago, that this board put out, because the last board, whatever, we put a, a timeline out, and it was a very doable timeline. Those dates, I think that, that timeline needs to be brought back in front of this board. Where are we, and why is that slipping? There's just, I mean, we just can't, the, it's, you know, our kids are not-
Well, in all fairness to the board, you know, to, to this board, previous boards, I think we have what we have, and we need to have our discussions with the superintendent and let him know what our expectations are. It might be advantageous to us. I know that the design builder, they're going to come forward with some kind of a presentation for us. But me, we might want to ask the superintendent if we could, on the next agenda, possibly have an update of what's going on with that school and where we are as far as timelines and all of that. Because I'm the messenger here, and I would like for all of you to hear it from the horse's mouth. And this is another reason why it's very important for us to have time to present our advisory committee stuff, because there's important work that's being done in these advisory committees. And that's my report.
Okay, thank you. And I'll also be brief. The Continuous Systemic Improvement Committee met last night, and those members are working to understand implementation of the strategic plan, and they look at the different focus areas. I want to give a shout out to our ESE department, Mike Burstyn, Jackie Turner, Rachel Taylor, Fernando Vasquez, and Deidre Phillips, for an excellent and informative presentation on inclusion, which was really validated today by the presentation from Calusa Elementary School. They continue to remain interested in the Continuous Systemic Improvement, and we will move forward talking about Chromebooks and retaining, hiring and retaining good talent in the future. I'll reserve the rest of my comments for later, due to the time. Dr. Atkins, any comments?
Well, first of all, I feel like I need to address Mr. Toyber's concern. You know, I think, first of all, with all the, with everything that's going on with the Benita property, I think that, that, I think we have absolutely pursued this as aggressively as we possibly can, and by pushing very hard, quite honestly, I think that it's actually, you know, freed us up to looking at probably the two best sites down there. And, and, you know, our folks are actively engaged with both I-STAR and the other, other group to hopefully bring this thing home this month. That would be our goal, if, if not early next month. You know, and I continue to, you know, push Mr. Snell, and he continues to say that we're still on timeline. But I, you know, I'll be honest with you blunt. You know, this is a building that's going to be down there for fifty-plus years. And rather than put it in somewhere that, you know, quick, make a quick decision, put it somewhere that, that is not the right decision, which we could have pushed the issue at Burnwood and put it there. But when I went down there and looked at the sites, I, I just didn't think that was the best way to go. I really think that, that the Benita Beach, Benita Grand site, the Imperial site, those two sites, the ones we're aggressively looking at, are really excellent sites. And, you know, we, we do our job correctly, and we'll have this thing open eighteen, nineteen. But we're also looking at plans that if we have to do a mid-year opening, we will do that. We can stage at seventeen, eighteen Estero. That's still the plan. We're still on track at this point. I think we'll know more in two or three weeks. Keep pushing me, you know. I welcome that. I want you to be that way. That makes me better as a superintendent. But, but please ask me questions before you get frustrated, because I'm here to answer those questions. I also want to know what your concerns are, because I know you hear from the community, "Hey, what the heck's going on?" And if I'm not keeping you in the loop, then, then, you know, just let me have it. But, but by all means, we will go right back. And I think we actually had plans to give you guys an update next time anyway. So, so actually, your comments are in line with our plans as well. I have to say, though, I am absolutely excited about what we have going on down in Benita Springs. First of all, we went down to the Benita Chamber of Commerce. They were overwhelmingly positive. This is a community like no other, and that, that I've dealt with recently, in terms of being so positive and supportive of having a high school in that particular area. And I think with the themes that we have going on with STEAM, or STEM, STEAM, the environmental opportunities that Mrs. Dozier mentioned, and collaborating with Florida Gulf Coast University, you know, their environmental program is their number-one program, and there we've got a school right in the backyard that we could feed into their environmental program, and even build partnerships and collaborations with that school. It's just, just, and then the other piece that I've had conversation with Reggie about is, you know, let's make this the, the most well-built, exciting, innovative high school that we, we have ever seen. That might have been why he creeped up from fifty to fifty-seven million. I hope that's not, and we'll push back if that's the case. But I think a lot of the exciting technologies that we can bring into play there can make this, you know, we can recoup a lot of costs in how efficient this building is going to be. Okay? And then the other thing is, this could be an absolute showcase, and it could be a learning opportunity, environmental learning opportunity for our students. I was reading a magazine over, over winter break, that, where a, an institution, a school, actually had signage all up and around the campus, you know, and talks about how green their school was. So you could talk, even, they even had signage on pipes that ran through their system, you know, where, what the, you know, wastewater going this direction, and coming out that direction, of course, the LED lighting, and, and on and on and on. We can do that at this particular school. So it's exciting to work on. I know that, you know, I also get a little nervous about the timeline, but believe me, it is, it is absolutely front-end of what we, we are doing. I do want to, so ask me any questions- I do want to, um, so, ask me any questions, and I'll update you as best I can, um, and we'll bring it back again next time. I do have to mention a couple, real quick things, I'll talk a little bit more about the next time, uh, this evening. World at Work recognized, uh, this district, let me pull it up here, recognized this district with the, um, with the Work to Life 2016 Seal of Distinction, and, and this is quite an honor. It talks about, uh, really, how, how well our workplace is, and, and how we promote wellness, and what we do, great things for employees. And I sent that to you, but I'll, I'll read the, the actual thing this evening. Uh, and then I do, would be remiss to, if I did mention our educational forum, which is tonight, January, or not tonight, I'm sorry, January 21st at 6:00 PM-
Security.
-at South Fort Myers High School. Uh, in that meeting, we do wanna talk about the Lee County, School District of Lee County Standards for Excellence, and the, the wanting, we want to raise the bar in our school district in terms of their standards for our students, so our students are prepared not only for a rigorous and competitive university environment, but also, uh, they are really truly prepared for a career environment, because we think the standard now in the state of Florida is a career, supposed to be for college and career readiness, and I don't think the standard meets either of those goals. We need a standard in Lee County that does meet those goals, so we'll talk about that. We'll talk about, uh, you know, our performance monitoring, and testing, and assessment, and the curriculum, and start that conversation with the community. So, uh, looking forward to that, January 24th, South Fort Myers High School, 6:00 PM. And that's all my comments today.
Thank you very much, and Mrs. Dozier has one more comment?
Well, and still, one thing I left off about the school, sorry. Um, I sent all of you an article about, with a lot of data in it, about the number of mechanics for, in the airline industry-
Yes.
-that are gonna be needed, and I've also heard from, um, the owner of Private Sky again, and I'm going to take the superintendent down there, and he also said if we'd like to take a little board field trip down there, but he's also the one that said that he could get us a jet, and that it's imperative if we wanna be on the front line of creating jobs, and we're not talking about a few jobs, we're talking about thousands of jobs for students, because the industry is in dire need, kinda the way we are with teaching. That's the way that industry is looking at, because all of the people are retiring, and they've become such technical jobs. And if, if parents could hear that the, if their child went through a training course and could get this certification, and they could automatically go in and start making a $65,000-a-year job, I think they'd say scrap college. And I'm not saying scrap college for everybody, but there are great jobs out there that you don't have to have a college degree for, and this is one area, and we really need, we're gonna be, we're gonna be, shame on us if we don't try to take advantage of this partnership and put one of these, um, schools in one of our schools, and that high school would be a perfect place to do it.
And he's offering $11,000 scholarships for some students.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Mr. Martin, did you have anything?
None, thank you.
Can I just, I'm sorry, um, just reminded me of, of something when you were talking about, um, that opportunity to partner with, um, and forgive me, I-
That's well, and, and-
Hmm?
Private Sky?
Private Sky, thank you.
Private Sky.
Um, I think you were out also at the Cape Coral Technical College this weekend, as was I, a little bit later in the day. Um, the, talked to Principal Mangan, you know, the ideas that he has for expanding the programs out there are exciting and inspiring. And also, Bill McCormick there at Fort Myers Technical College is working, I sent you the email, is working along, uh, actually providing kind of some entry-level jobs to, uh, to the airline industry, but, uh, he has also been interested in expanding, as, as you had mentioned as well. So I think there is a lot of opportunity there, and it would be shame on us if we didn't take advantage of it.
Thank you. Okay, board members, seeing no other business, come before this board. I'll entertain a motion for adjournment. Is that moved? All in favor? Aye.